My name is Zach Sawyer, and tonight I'll be the chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for February 2nd, 2023. We will hear the cases in the order they appear on the agenda. We'll make some changes to that shortly. But first matter of business we're going to jump into is citizen comments. And we had several folks sign up. And for citizen comment, you'll have three minutes to speak, and you'll hear a little buzzer over here when it hits 30 seconds remaining. But, um, okay, we have Rachel Ury, I believe. Is it Rachel Ury? Here to speak for Agenda Item 3.2.2. And please state your name and address.
Rachel Ury. Each step along the way of Carpet Tech's desiring access to 18th Street is concerning to us. My main concern is that I have children that are dropped off at their school bus, 18th and Oak Ridge, and they have to walk past, walk past Carpet Tech's, the alley behind Carpet Tech at this point. So any forward movement on them getting access to that alleyway or to 18th Street would really be dangerous to my children.
Okay. Ma'am, could you state your address real quick?
My what?
Your address.
Oh, 1703 Norwich Avenue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Pat, is it Lox?
Lox.
Lox.
Yes, I live at 1702 Norwich Avenue, and I'm here to let you know that we are adamantly opposed to any changes to the plat for Terra Estates. We have several concerns that Rachel just mentioned regarding safety. We are concerned that there will be commercial driveways put into a residential neighborhood. They are already lacking a screening fence. The commercial property has not been following any of the rules or zoning. They are right now putting in a metal fence with gates in it into our neighborhood. This is against city code already. It's against zoning. We have had several issues with traffic increased in a commercial sense. There are large trucks coming through our neighborhood. It's a risk to us. It doesn't serve the public interest to make this change in the zoning plat. This is just one step toward allowing a commercial property access to a residential area. It's a residential area which I have signed a petition by 42 people in our neighborhood that says no commercial driveways, screening fence, just follow the rules. I don't know if you want a copy of this as well, but we do have a signed petition from 42 residents.
Yes, ma'am. Please.
We would ask that you not approve the platting change. I realize that that's probably an unusual request, but it's one step toward causing havoc in a residential area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lox. Okay, next on citizen comment, we have Ms. Mary Vines, speaking on behalf of 3471-C.
Good evening. I'm Mary Vines. I live at 4002 16th Street, Apartment 4106. And I prepared a letter that did not get to you in time to be in your file, but I asked that it be distributed, and you'll have a chance, I guess, to look at it later. I just want to reiterate for you my objection to zoning case 3471C, and hope that you are not going to hear it tonight. I think you, there's been a resolution that it not be considered tonight, but in the event that it is, I do want to express a couple of objections to it's being adopted. One is that diminishing the number of occupants does not significantly diminish the negative impacts of the project and its potential for deteriorating this already, already dense neighborhood. And it is a historic neighborhood that needs to be preserved, and this could, approval of this project could lead to, to its deterioration. The other thing is that the City of Lubbock spent a lot of money for preparation of Plan Lubbock 2040. And in that, there is a statement, or from that, there is a statement that you would find on the Neighborhood section of the Planning Department webpages on the City of Lubbock website. And one of the things that it says is that, starting in 2022, the City of Lubbock Planning Department will begin work with individual neighborhoods to create localized plans, which will be attached to the comprehensive plan. And it goes on to say, strong neighborhoods are the cornerstone of a strong city. The Neighborhood Planning Program celebrates the uniqueness and diversity found with Lubbock neighborhoods, and we will work alongside the residents and stakeholders to promote engagement and to strengthen all aspects of our neighborhoods. And I think that it would be very wise for there to be no zoning changes made until the Neighborhood Planning Project has had an opportunity to work with Neighborhood residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lox. Next citizen comment, we had Mr. Don Richards, speaking on behalf of 3471-E.
Mr. Chairman, I signed the wrong form. I signed the right form next time. I'll be speaking later.
Okay. Then no more citizen comment, so we'll keep moving on. All right, so one thing to note, Item 5.3, Zone Case 0774-B. Did I get that right this time? For Mitzi McIntyre, that will not be heard tonight. That will be postponed to the March 2nd Planning and Zoning Commission. So if anybody is here on behalf of Zone Case 0774-B, Item 5.3 on your agenda, that will not be heard tonight and be pushed to March 2nd. Next matter of business, approval of meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second. Second, Mr. Wheatley. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, moving on to consent agenda. And we are going to, let me think how we're going to do this again. We're going to, let's remove Items 3.1.2 and 3.2.1 for the sake of recusal. Let's remove those now. We'll hear the rest of the agenda, or the rest of...
If you will also renew Item 3.1.3, I believe, the preliminary plat for hydrate, because...
For do not. That's correct. Okay, so at this time, we'll remove 312, 321, and 313.
Mr. Chair, I'm not sure I've ever run into a case where somebody wanted to discuss a plat. So should we pull that one out and discuss it?
We can. We requested we can.
Let's do that.
Either anyone you want to. Yes, is that 3.2.2?
3.2.2, yeah.
Okay, so staff will present 3.2.2. You want to vote on the other items?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go ahead and, we'll need a motion for the remaining of Item 3.
Motion to approve. I'll present agenda items with the exceptions of 3.1.2, 3.1.3, 3.2.1, 3.2.2.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so first, we want to hear 3.2.2.
3.2.2 is a Rule 12 plat for Terra Estates. This is to replat two lots into one. They front onto 19th Street. There, there are other concerns that the neighborhood has expressed here tonight that are not under your consideration tonight. The only thing for your consideration on the agenda is whether or not to approve the replat of these two lots into one. This plat meets all of the subdivision regulation standards in the City Code of Ordinances. Therefore, it is a ministerial vote from this commission, and it is required to be approved.
So in addressing things such as...
So there has been...
Their concerns.
Sure, there has been a separate application submitted through the Engineering Department for the request to close the dedicated alley adjacent to this property. That request goes straight to the City Council. It is not considered by this commission, and it has not been placed on a City Council agenda at this time.
It has been placed.
It has not.
Has not.
But basically what you're saying...
But it's, it's not our job.
It is not under your consideration.
But basically, what you're saying is, is the way it is now, art still is to approve it because it's not all standards.
That's correct.
Right.
It is just a replat. It does not close any right-of-way. Motion to approve 3.2.2.
Second.
Second, Mr. Bell. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so next item, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. Let's do Item 3.1.3. That is up for denial. The applicant has asked for that, so. We'll need a motion.
Motion to approve Item 3.1.3.
Second.
Second, Susan. So, all in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
That's the first time we've gotten it right.
[laughing]
Good job. So Mr. Wheatley's going to recuse from 3.1.2 and 3.2.1. And if anybody needs to hear anything, I'll give one of those who can pull it off, and we can vote.
Motion to approve 3.1.2 and 3.2.1.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Karen, you're getting all the motions. In seconds, stop me if I'm moving too quickly. Okay, so now, we're going to move into the regular agenda. Another odd scenario here. Items 4.1.1 and 4.1.2 are plat vacations, which staff is going to present.
Good evening, Board. My name is Greg Hernandez with the Planning Department, and this is a case for Bell Farms, lots 1753 through 1806, and tracks VW and X. The applicant is AMD Engineering LLC. And the purpose of this plat is to vacate a recorded plat to have it revert back to vacant unsubdivided land. Here is the plat. It was recorded in May 2021, and staff recommends approval of the plat vacation, and I can take any questions at this time.
Okay. Any questions for staff? We've voted on these separately. All right, so we'll need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, Mr. Bell. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next, 4.2.2.
This is a case for Legacy Ranch South, lots 1 through 22, and tracks A through G. The applicant is Park Hill, and the purpose of this plat is to vacate a recorded plat to have it revert back to vacant unsubdivided land. Here is the plat. It was recorded in June of 2022. Staff recommends denial of the plat vacation as per the applicant's request, and I can take any questions at this time.
Motion to approve.
Second, Dan. In favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so...
Denial.
It's a denial.
No, was it?
Yeah.
It was a not...
Then let's do a new motion for that.
I'd like to make a motion to rescind the last vote.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
This is a case for Bell Farms, lots 1753 through 1807, and lots 2087 through 2117, and tracks V and X. The applicant is AMD Engineering LLC. They're requesting a Rule 15 plat with right-of-way closure. Here is the plat. Here are the conditions from GIS and planning. And staff recommends approval of plat with conditions and approval of right-of-way closures. And I can take any questions at this time.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
Motion to approve Item 4.2.1.
Second.
Second, Susan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
This is the case for Halyscos, tracks A and B. The applicant is Delta Land Surveying and Engineering, and they're requesting a Rule 15 plat with water, sewer, and paving delays. Here is the plat. Here are the conditions from engineering. More conditions from engineering as well as GIS and planning. And staff recommends approval of the plat with conditions and denial of water, sewer, and paving delays, and I can take any questions at this time.
Mr. Chair, so this is approval of plat with conditions and denial?
Of the waivers.
Of the waivers. Okay, so we, motion to approve? Yeah, as presented. Okay.
Motion to approve as presented. Second.
Second, Avi. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And that's it on Rule 15. So now, we are going to, so we're going to recess into executive session prior to starting all of the zone cases. So at this time, the Planning and Zoning Commission will recess into executive session to hold consultation with the city staff pursuant to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code. Good? All And we are going to start with our first zone case, Item 5.1, Case 809-B.
Good evening. This is Case 809-B. The applicant is AMD Engineering LLC for Shanghai Development Company LLC. The request is to rezone from C3-R1A and IDP to A2. Property is located south of Kent Street and east of North University Avenue. We have sent three notifications and received back none in response. Here is the aerial map. The property to the north, east, and south is undeveloped, and there's a school to the, to the west. Here's the zoning map. The surrounding properties are zoned, single-family District R1, with a specific use for a state school to the west, single-family district with reduced setbacks, R1A, and general retail district, C3, to the south, and industrial park district, IDP, to the east and north. Here is the future land use map, and this property is designated for low-density residential land uses. Here's an exhibit provided by the applicant, along with a rendering, and a site plan, and further exhibits. Here are photos of the subject and surrounding property. The future land use map designates this area for low-density residential land uses. This request does not conform to this designation, but is appropriate along the major thoroughfare, and also serves as a buffer for single-family uses to the east. Therefore, this request is in moderate conformance with the comprehensive plan principles. The proposed zone change is in conformance with the zoning ordinance, and the proposed zone change is compatible with the surrounding area and would not change the character of the existing development. The location is along North University Avenue, which is designated as a principal arterial. Staff recommends approval of this request, and I can take any questions at this time.
Any questions for staff?
This is adjacent to the CEC, isn't it? Basically, the County Event Center.
It's just north of it, just, just slightly.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. We'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant or his/her representative? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Corey Dooley, the AMD Engineering, 6515 68th Street. I'm here representing George McMahon and Shanghai Development. Staff did a great job explaining this, this property and this project. It's a, it's a fairly low-dense apartment project. It fits in with our center point development. We've already constructed our first phase of single-family development, which will actually be between the facility you're referring to in this, in this complex. This is a downzone from what is currently a more industrial zoning, and feel like this is adequate for the area. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Dooley? All right, thank you, Corey. Okay, is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this zone case? Is there anyone here to speak in favor? All right, not seeing any hands. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, Mr. Wheatley. Any comments, questions? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
This is Case 3145-J. The applicant is SK Architecture Group for Shift Automotive. The purpose is to rezone from CB2 to CB3. 19 notification letters were sent out, and we did not receive any back in favor of proposition. The property is located south of 19th Street and east of Avenue K. Here's the aerial view of the property. To the west, east, and north are car lots, and to the south is a vacant lot. The zoning map shows to the north and east Central Business District 2, to the south Commercial, and to the west Central Business District 3. The future land use map designates this property for commercial uses. Here's a picture of the subject's property, as well as views to the northwest and east. The future land use map designates this area for commercial uses. The proposed zone changes to CB3 would be in conformance with the future land use plan. The proposed zone change is in conformance with the zoning ordinance. The property is located in an appropriate location along a minor arterial. The proposed zone change is compatible with the surrounding area and will not change the character of the existing development. The proposed rezoning location is along 19th Street, designated as a minor arterial in Avenue K, which is designated as a collector by the Master Thoroughfare Plan 2018. Staff recommends approval of this request, and I can take any questions at this time.
I have one question. Going from CB2 to the CB3, changing that, that allows it to go to a little interstate, is it interstate Commercial and Interstate Office? That's one difference between the two, and I'm just trying to clarify what those differences are.
Let's see, Kristen, do you...
The difference between the CB2 and CB3?
CB3 adds a little to interstate highway, correct, isn't it?
Yes, and, and the main difference in this case specifically, CB3 would allow a used car lot, which CB2 does not.
So, but isn't Cavender CB2?
Yes, but the CB districts were not introduced downtown until mid-2000s, and a lot of these uses were in existence prior to that, so they are non-conforming.
Okay, just going from the map, you're showing that they were CB2, so that's why.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Any other questions? Okay, all right. So we'll go ahead, open the public hearing. Is the applicant here? Or his or her representative? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Lori Martin with SK Architecture Group, and as presented, yeah, we just want to change to a CB3 in order to do a used car lot for our client.
She stated her name and address. Did you get that?
Oh, sorry, it's 3419 35th Street.
Okay, any questions for the...? All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this zone case? Is anyone to speak in favor? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Comments, questions, discussion?
For matter of discussion, make the motion to approve Zone Case 3145-J.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Next item, 5.3 is postponed to March 2nd. Okay? And we will move into, we're going to move into 5.5, 2538, I think. That's right.
Good evening. This is Case 2538-FF. The applicant is San Juan Rodriguez for Roseanne Rodriguez, and they're requesting to rezone from R1 to C4. The subject property is located south of 19th Street and east of Wasau Avenue, and we've sent 11 notifications, receiving back three in favor. Here's the notification map, and here's the aerial map. The surrounding areas consist of single-family homes, vacant lots, and commercial structures. Here's the zoning map. It shows properties zoned R1 to the northwest and south with C4 to the east. And the future land use map, which designates this area for low-density residential land uses. Here are photos of the subject and surrounding property. The future land use map designates this area for low-density residential land uses. This request does not conform to this designation, but is appropriate along a major thoroughfare, considering nearby commercial uses and zoning. Therefore, this request is in moderate conformance with the comprehensive plan principles. The proposed zone change is in conformance with the zoning ordinance, and the property is located along a major thoroughfare is compatible next to adjacent land uses. And the proposed zone change is compatible with the surrounding area and would not change the character of the existing development. The location is along 19th Street, which is designated as a principal arterial. Staff recommends approval of this request, and I can take any questions at this time.
Any questions? Can you go back to the photos?
Absolutely.
Which one, it's looking...
Top right corner, right there, is the subject property.
Top right corner, looking at that right there?
Mm-hmm.
Is this like a cleanup case, or they're already, this is the owner, they're already using that? What...
My understanding is it has been used as a commercial property, well, for quite a while, and, and possibly since annexation.
You have C4 adjacent to it?
Yes, sir. We have C4 to the, to the east and a little bit further down to the west as well.
And then it's on single-family to the south?
So it's currently zoned, single-family, and it's obviously not being used as a single-family right now?
And Mr. Chairman, if I might add, this area is zoned, single-family R1, because it was annexed in 1985, and at that time, property was given the zoning designation of R1 when it came into the city. And a lot of businesses in this area were existing prior to annexation.
Yes.
Go ahead.
So were these other commercial zones, were they pre-existing, or have we changed the zoning to those?
The adjacent C4 properties?
Mm-hmm.
Those have been rezoned. The ones to the west were rezoned in 1991. The ones to the east, the one immediately to the east, was rezoned in June of last year.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you. Is the applicant here? Like to add additional comments? Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and address.
Roseanne Rodriguez, 7425 West 19th Street. This property has been used, there's not going to be any change. We're requesting a zoning change, but there is no change to the usage of the land. We've had it for a little over 20 years, and it's had, kind of had the same function, and we don't plan to change the function of it. So, that's it.
Any questions for the app? All right. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this zone case? Anyone to speak in favor? All right, not seeing any.
Per matter of discussion, make the motion to approve Zone Case 2538-FF.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Now, we will jump back up to Zone Case 3471-C.
Good evening. My name is Ashley Padilla. This is for Zone Case 3471-C. The applicant is Generator 1 LLC, requesting a zone change from Commercial District C4, specific use; Commercial District C4; Local Retail District C2, specific use; Multifamily District R3; and Single Family District R1 to Commercial Apartment District CA and Family Apartment District A1 with a planned development. We've sent out 29 notifications, receiving 179 in favor, 171 from outside the notification boundary, and 47 in opposition, 35 from outside the notification boundary. This property is located south of 19th Street and west of University Avenue. Here's the notification map. Here's an aerial view of the property, with Texas Tech University to the north, a hotel to the east, an apartment complex to the west, and residential homes to the south. The current zoning is single-family, multifamily, local retail, specific use, commercial and commercial, specific use. The future land use plan designates this property for commercial and residential low-density. Here are some photos of the property on 19th Street and photos from 20th Street. Here are some graphics provided by the applicant. Here is a graph showing enrollment change and growth for Texas Tech University in the fall of 2020. This is the distribution of total enrollment for Texas by county. And here are some additional calculations for enrollment. Here is the zoning key with the current zoning districts. Here's a survey of the proposed zoning of CA with a PD along 19th Street and A1 with a PD along 20th Street. Here's an existing and future street view of 20th Street and an existing and future street view of 19th Street. Here's the previous site plan for the 20th Street. On the left is the old plan, and on the right is the new plan showing detached residences. This is the previous site plan for 19th Street. On the left is the old plan. On the right is the new plan showing an increased front setback in preserving the existing wall and trees. And here are some photos of prior Up Campus projects. Here's the concept site plan with the old plan on the left and the new plan on the right. On 20th Street, they are now proposing seven two-story residences in lieu of the previous three-story apartment building. This is the site plan for the first floor and the site plan for the typical floor. The next few slides the applicant will touch on, this is the project summary for 19th Street and 20th Street. This is the project access and utilities summary. Proposed deviations from the CA zoning for front setbacks. Requirement is 25 feet. Proposed is 20 feet with a deviation of 5 feet. The property to the east has a 30-foot front setback, while the property to the west has a 20-foot front setback. This slide is showing the existing setbacks on the property. The existing building on 19th is 3 1/2 feet over into the alley. The apartment complex to the west has 10 feet rear setback, and the church has a side setback on the west of 2 feet. The proposed deviation for the CA rear yard is only required on the portion of the subject property shown here. Required is 60 feet. Proposed is 10 feet with a deviation of 50 feet. There are more than 60 uses permitted by right in the C4 district listed here and on the next slide. The proposed deviations from the A1 zoning for side yard setbacks required is 50 feet. Proposed is 10 feet. The deviation is 40 feet. This slide is also showing the existing setbacks on 20th Street. Some of the garages on the east part of the property are sitting anywhere from 0 to 2 feet from the alley. The front setbacks are anywhere from 17 to 20 feet, and the side setbacks are sitting anywhere from 0 to 5 feet. And this is showing how many uses. 28 uses permitted by right in C2 district listed here. In 1956, the Zoning Board of Adjustment approved Special Exception Case E0062 on the property zoned R1 on 20th Street to allow parking for businesses. This allows a business developed on the adjacent C2 properties to have their required parking on the R1 property. In 1993, the City Council rezoned the C2 property to C2-specific use with the following conditions: that all unconditionally permitted C2 uses be allowed in addition to dinner theaters, staff living quarters, and visiting artist living quarters. This slide gives a breakdown of the parking per unit and for retail spaces on 19th Street, which are... Which they are all exceeding by 51 spaces. 20th Street will exceed the parking required by 17 spaces. Here is a density comparison for other student housing apartments near the universities in the area. Additional research the applicant can touch on. Study on density. This is a view of the existing fence and trees lining the property. Site plan showing the plan with the existing fence along the... Along with the trees. And here are a few graphics showing a few of the existing design elements they intend to preserve. Here's the future street-level view of 19th Street. Proposed materials for the site. This is the previous design on 20th Street. The future design of 20th Street of detached residences. The next few slides is a traffic analysis given by Kimberly Horn that the applicant can touch on as well. This slide shows the number of trips generated by other student housing. This is accident data provided by the Lubbock Police Department within the last five years on University from 19th to Marshall Sharp Freeway and on 19th Street from Boston to University. During those five years on 19th Street, there was one crash involving a pedestrian, 146 crashes total, with no fatalities. The future land use map designates the subject property on 19th Street for commercial land uses and the subject property on 20th Street for low-density residential land uses. The proposed zone change to CA with a PD would be in conformance with the commercial designation as CA offers commercial and apartment living. Although the proposed zone change to A1 on 20th Street is not in conformance with the designation of low-density residential land uses, the planned development will establish restrictions to the design, creating units that conform in size and scale to the established homes on this street. The proposed zone change is in conformance with the zoning ordinance, and it is appropriate adjacent to other mixed zonings and uses that are established. The proposed zone change is compatible with the surrounding area. There is an apartment complex to the west and a hotel to the east with Texas Tech University to the north. The applicant is proposing apartments for student housing. The subject property is along 19th Street and 20th Street with 19th Street designated as a principal arterial and 20th Street designated as a local street by the Master Thoroughfare Plan 2018. Arterial streets provide connectivity across the transportation network and are continuous routes whose function is to serve high-volume needs to local traffic and regional traffic. Local streets provide access to smaller, destination-oriented areas such as neighborhoods, subdivisions, or local business districts. Staff recommends approval of this request, and I can take any questions.
I have a question. Can we... Can the townhomes on 20th Street be built under R2?
So the reason the applicant requested A1 is because in the R1, single-family residential, and R2, two-family residential districts, no more than two unrelated individuals can reside in any one residence.
Ashley, or Susan, was that...
Yeah.
You want to expand on that?
Well, I mean, I would like it if that could be made R2 because that's a buffer then, and that's sort of a game changer between A1 and R1. But... And I find it ironic that they have to choose A1 because you can't have more than two unrelated people when we all know that there are plenty of unrelated people living in rental houses in tech terrace.
Exactly.
But... And it's a shame because I think that changing that to R2 would be beneficial to everybody.
I had a question about setbacks. So, what's being provided versus what's required? Am I... They're... What they're providing is a greater setback than what's required of them? Am I reading that right, or is it the...
On 19th or 20th?
On 19th.
If you'll go back, Ashley, to those slides. So they're requesting a deviation from the front setback and the rear setback on 19th. On... We'll start with the front. On 19th Street, they are required a 25-foot front setback because we take the average of the two adjacent lots. They are proposing 20. So they are asking for a deviation of 5 foot. And then on the rear setback, if you'll go to that slide, they... This portion of the subject property backs up to four R1 lots. And so that portion would be required a 60-foot rear setback, and they are asking for 10. Right... So a 50-foot deviation.
And does it make a difference that it's a parking garage versus another residence that they're backing up to?
That is up for you to decide. It doesn't... No, it doesn't change the ordinance.
Okay. It's stated 60. It doesn't matter what the use is.
Correct. It's the structure.
Because I know that one of the concerns last time was that the existing structures are all the way up on the alley, and they just... It's difficult to navigate on it. Okay. And then the occupancy of those houses on 20th, apartments on 20th? What's the bed count of those?
So there are seven units, five beds each.
Did you say the applicant's going to talk more about the parking? Or can you go back to that slide?
I mean, I can go back to that slide.
And we can hear you.
Here we go.
And setbacks are met on the apartments?
On the A1? The only setback deviation is the side setback. So again, because it's A1 zoning, any two-story structure requires a 50-foot side setback, even though these residences are two-story detached residences similar to what you could find in R1 or R2.
Okay. And then the radius of... In favor and opposed? Can you pull that up?
Mm-hmm. The map?
Yeah.
Is that what you want me to look at?
Okay. Okay. That's all I have. Any other questions for staff now? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Is the applicant here? His or her representative? Like to make any additional comments? Yes, sir. State your name and address.
Clearly not the applicant himself. But my name's Benji Snead. I live at 4818 99th Street. Some of you may know me from my years at KCBD doing local news, so bear with me. I've always wanted to say this. Good evening, and thank you for joining us. Karen and Avner, have the night off. So, I am here tonight on behalf of the applicant for this project, Stephen Buss of Up Campus, the landowner, George Hardberger, and as an advocate for the entire city of Lubbock because I do want to see our city and Texas Tech grow and grow responsibly. First of all, I want to thank the commission here. Your hard work and consideration for the very significant changes that we've seen outlined here to the rezoning application for this property. We understand your volunteers, and we sincerely thank you for how serious you've... You take your role on this commission. This process has allowed us to refine and improve on a plan that is critical for serving the need to bring students closer to Texas Tech campus so that they can be more engaged with their classmates and their professors, enjoy easy access to campus resources, easily walk to class. And that... The statistics on the accidents with five accidents in five years and no fatalities should tell us that they're taking the crosswalk. So, what you just saw from the city planning staff illustrates significant changes specifically addressing every reasonable concern we've been given. A reduction in size of the project, whether it be beds or units, by almost 20%. Greater parking ratio in excess of what's required by code. Reduction in height on 20th Street from a three-story single building to two-story homes. And I'll note that there's already a three-story building behind the hotel that's not a part of this project, that has been there and will conceivably stay there. So we're lower than that. And a decrease in traffic by completely eliminating the existing parking lot accessing 20th Street. This new plan has support from Texas Tech, faculty, students, staff, coaches, administration. Some of them are here with us here tonight. And we know why they support it because they know the numbers. Texas Tech student enrollment is growing by about 600 students a year. That's about 3,000 additional students in five short years. So where are they going to live? Well, our studies show the further away they live from campus, the worse the traffic will be across the entire city. And Tech is competing for those students with other universities in Texas that have better housing that aren't sprawled out far from campus like we have here in Lubbock. And based on recent news reports, I don't believe tonight that you're going to hear anything significantly new from the TT unit, who are strong in numbers again, but have opposed every plan we've submitted, suggesting and flat-out stating there is no plan that student housing will ever be supported at this location. So ladies and gentlemen, it's clear the best possible option for the use of this land is for mixed use... This project with mixed use on 19th and the homes on 20th. This will keep Texas Tech strong. It'll keep us thriving and keep Lubbock growing. Now, we have lots of folks this go-around that are expecting to speak in support of this project tonight. We want to respect your time, and we're not going to parade those folks up here unless any single member of this commission requests that. Having said that, I would like to introduce Corey Doolin with AMD Engineering. He's our expert. I think we've heard from him already once tonight to answer any technical questions you might have in addition to what has already been answered.
Good evening. I just want to expound on a couple of items and certainly appreciate staff recommending approval. I believe that the last case was also recommended for approval as well. But based on feedback from the community with concerns over traffic, traffic on 20th Street especially is what I heard. I was not part of the case originally, but was fortunate enough to be here till midnight that night and really enjoyed that. But there were significant concerns and legitimate concerns about traffic on 20th Street, about the density of the project, the height of the building on 20th Street being three stories. That's certainly a concern that was issued. Concerns over the original hospital and, you know, the cultural aspect that that brings to the area. And Benji's already mentioned a lot of the changes that we've come back with. So there's been some significant changes. A 20% reduction in beds is a significant reduction. And it's roughly 145 less beds on 20th Street with this plan. So I get the desire to go with an R2, but every R2 case would be... Would be met with opposition as well. There's... It's obvious to the neighborhood that any type of multifamily or residence housing in this area that would potentially compete with rental market in the... on 19th, on the 19th parking garage. So, now, those are being pulled off, which greatly increases the parking capacity of that garage. And as was mentioned, it's over 50 spaces overparked from what code would require just for the 19th Street property. The 20th Street property with the garages in the back were 16 spaces overparked. One thing to note also is with the increased setbacks that we're offering, as was mentioned, one of the buildings is three feet over the alley line, we're going to be 10 feet off, we're going to widen the pavement in that area, we're going to, we're going to change the utilities, take care of some of the overhead poles. We have plans to increase the sewer capacity in that area, so we're taking care of the engineering things. We've met with TechDOT about traffic. We're taking care of all those things that you guys don't care as much about, this is a zoning case, but we are thinking about all of those concerns and those issues. The preservation of that wall is something that was important to many, and we're taking care of that. Again, that's part of the increased setback from the previous case. That should help with pedestrian concerns as well. And we're preserving the entrance to the St. Mary of the Plains Hospital, that nice facade that has been there for so long. We're going to dismantle that piece by piece and reconstruct it on this new facility, preserving the historical, or the cultural impact of that facility, as well as the medallion that kind of honors the original two doctors there. So, those are things that we've incorporated into the design as a way to hopefully meet some of those concerns. I would, I would say that also the owners have reached out to the Texas Tech unit to meet with them again. I believe they've reached out on January the 18th, emailed, emailed out to Cindy Prattis, Don Richards, and Mark McBreyer to have a follow-up meeting, and that meeting was denied. I believe that their stance is very firm, and their opposition, and I think that you'll hear that the concessions that we've made are not enough, but we feel like these are significant changes, significant concessions. One thing, a couple of things I'd like to point out, let's see. If you look at this slide, and if you look at some of the residence halls that are directly across the street from 19th Street, you've got Coleman, Chitwood, Weymouth, I mean, those are more than 10 stories, 12-story buildings. Residence halls with windows facing south, Hewland Clement wall gates, six-story student housing, Talkington, six stories. What Benji mentioned earlier, on 20th Street on the east side, there's a three-story apartment complex. These, many of these structures are closer to the residences in the TT unit than the structure we're proposing on the northeast corner. I don't think that anybody woke up today at Tech Terrace and thought, oh, gosh, I'm next to a campus of 41,000 students. This is a, this is a very large campus and a lot of students, and we certainly need to have more student housing that is close by. It was mentioned about a traffic study, and I'm not going to go into the weeds of a traffic study, but it is important to see that the students that are going to be living in these units are not going to be commuting, they're not going to be driving and parking in a commuter lot. Let me get to the parking slide. In fact, if you look at the existing use of the property, off of 20th Street, there's 104 spaces existing that is used for commuter students. So, you have students coming to this, to this property, 104 spaces that are walking to school. Pardon me, I'm going to get to that one. So, it's currently used as a commuter lot. People are driving to this and having trip generations and miles coming from all these surrounding apartment units and driving to places like this to park, and then walking across into campus. So, the study by the traffic engineer shows trip generations driving from this facility around onto university and up into one of the commuter lots. I would argue that that would take much longer than, than walking or biking, which is what most of the students would be doing, which is what the students are doing who are parking at this existing facility. Also, this existing facility is used as a cut-through. It cuts through, traffic goes from 19th through this facility into 20th Street and vice versa. So, that will no longer be, be an issue. On this map, and it's hard to see, but you can take a look at the different apartment complexes in the vicinity. And the numbers on these units, it shows average daily miles for these. For Wildwood Edition, or Wildwood, it's 17,000 trip miles. Capstone Cottage is 14,000 trip miles. For this facility, with them figuring that everybody's driving to school to a commuter lot from this, it's only 1,400 trip miles. That's, that's not a realistic number, and yet it's still less than 10% of many of these other properties. Many of these properties are just as dense and have as many students. So, we feel like we are providing a complex, a property, a project to the city and to Texas Tech University that allows people to live in it without having to use their vehicles, without having to use the traffic system around the entire university and the feeder roads that feed it. We're going to be decreasing traffic with this type of a project. As was mentioned, this is certainly a needed thing for Tech, it's needed for students. There are slides in here that you guys have in your handouts that show, a lot of the students coming to us come from very large cities. And whereas I grew up in a small town and was driving when I was 15 years old, that's not the case for everybody. It's, it's not the same as it was when I was in, in school here with 24,000 students. It's, it's a little bit different, and we've got students that, that aren't able to drive. We have 14 students. There's certainly a need for a facility near campus that is pedestrian-friendly. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys might have. I can certainly go through anything else, any slides in particular.
Yeah, Corey, I got a quick question. On the elevation of the houses on 20th Street, it's kind of an isometric view. Can you go back to the, is there a slide that shows maybe head-on or overview?
Well, this is, this slide here?
Well, so, they're all, they're not connected?
They're not connected. So, you can see from, and this is, let's see. Just to point this out, this is a courtyard that's incorporating, you can see some of the details from the, from the existing hospital that just kind of incorporates the cultural aspect of what was there existing.
Wait, can you go back and show that again?
Okay. This one or this one?
The one showing the existing, how is that going to be incorporated?
Okay. Do you see the, the red doors?
Mm-hmm.
And, and all the, the features around it? Those are all going to be dismantled. All the, all the pillars and such are going to be dismantled on-site and preserved and then replaced onto the new structure. So, you'd be walking through those red doors to get into this facility in this courtyard area. The courtyard's going to be stamped with some of the same patterns that are on the existing building. And then, the decorative fence, that wall with the, with the metal pieces there and the trees, those are going to remain in place. It's going to be extended where we don't have it. It's going, it's going to be maintained and kind of kept throughout the frontage there.
Can you go back to the, that?
Do you have a particular question about this one?
Well, I mean, I don't think that it, when I'm looking at it, I don't, you know, that was certainly one of the things on my questions list was whether there was anything that you could do to preserve some of the history. Because that's one of my concerns, is getting rid of St. Mary's, and then that history's gone. Is there anything else you could do architecturally that would pay some sort of homage? Is that off the table?
I, I mean, I feel like they've done that with some of the landscape architectural elements, with incorporating the exact front of the hospital with, with those doors. I mean, that's, that's as architecturally the same as we could possibly get. It's taking the front and sticking it on the, the front there.
Corey, back on your question, on my original question about the houses in the back, so, are they spaced out side to side?
Yes, sir. Let's see if I can get to that. I'm sorry. These slides are a little, there you go. So, yeah, they're, they're independent structures with a detached garage in the back. It's very similar to what you would see at vintage town, townhomes, township.
Okay. So, are they spaced out, minimum 10 foot apart or 5 foot?
Yes. Well, they're 16 feet, 11 feet, 13 feet, so more so than a typical R1 would be, what you're accustomed to. And they're, and they're deeper. So, most of our R1s are 20-foot front setback. These, you can see, we've got 30, 25, 25, 27, 28, 25. So, these are, pardon me, the last one's 30. So, these are more set back than, than the traditional R1 zoning is that you see today.
Okay. On the, on the garages in the back, so the previous case was, there's concerns about traffic on 20th. These garages in the back take traffic down the alley. So, would a proponent be agreeable to being married to garages in the back in this, in this design?
Well, we-
To prevent a flip of, just so it, garages aren't going on the 20th, just so we know it's going to be like that?
Oh, yeah. I mean, this is, this is certainly the, the site plan that is, that is presented for this PD, and we'll be married to this plan. We don't have any plans to front any garages or driveways onto 20th Street. If you go up and down 20th Street, there's cars parked all over the place along 20th Street. That, that won't be the case for the residences of this, of this property. The, the parking spaces that were originally for this side of the project was all in the parking garage off of 19th Street. So, we've, we've pulled 35 spaces into, into this area here.
Okay. So, they're all, are they all two-story or some of them one?
They're all two-story. They're all two-story, five-bed units.
Like a vintage-type look?
Yes, sir.
Is, is there, I mean, you see the advantage to R2 being there. Is that just completely off the table?
Yes, ma'am.
That's non-negotiable?
Yes, ma'am.
One thing we have to keep in mind is the plan development. So, on a plan development, we haven't seen many of them. They get to propose what, how they want it to lay out in a plan development. So, it's, we're here to, to hear how it's presented.
This, this will function like all the, many of the houses in this area, which are rented to Tech students that have, many of them have more than two non-family members.
Well, I, I understand that, but you understand the benefits to zoning at R2 versus A1.
I mean, functionally, they're laid out like R1 homes. I think that's the, you know, so they're laid out like R1 homes, and we're going with the A1 just because of the two-person unrelated issue. I think R2 would be like if they were attached. Sir, could you please state your name and address?
Sorry. Stephen, Stephen Buss of Campus Properties, 560 West Washington in Chicago.
So, if we went with an R2, it wouldn't be a plan development. It would be allowing for driveways in the front, we could do townhomes, duplexes, or single-family. I mean, there would be, there'd be a wide range of things that we, we could do there. But that's, that's certainly not in keeping with the plan that we're presenting.
Mr. Doolin, I'm going back to the one about the garages in the back. Where's the access to those coming from? Is it straight down the alleys or going to be something?
Yes, sir. It's a, it's a paved alley from, from university all the way to-
They don't have to come down the alleys?
Yes, sir.
On university?
Yes, sir. And, and if you, if you look up and down that area, many of these that back into this alley have, have garages that back up to this, have residences that use these now. I mean, it's, it's being used now as driveways for many residences.
I understand the clarification.
Yes, sir. And, and we plan to widen the alley in this area to make it more traversable, not as tight. And, and to do that, we've got to take care of some overhead poles and bury some utilities. So, there's going to be a lot of work that goes into this to make this work.
It does show on the parking garage for the apartments on 19th, there's a residential loading and trash, and then there's a retail loading and trash. That's not an entrance and exit to the garage, is it?
There is residential loading. I mean, that is, that can be a residential-
So, they can come down the alley and pull into the parking garage and exit out of the parking garage there?
None, not, not for the regular cars for the residents. That's just for trash loading, loading, loading vans and things like that. So, your major, you know, your service functions, not your residential parking functions.
All the residential traffic down on 19th, they're going to go out to 19th.
Correct.
And, and the residential traffic, the traffic in this area, we're between two signals. You've got a signal at Boston, a signal at university. This is a ride-in, ride-out. This is going to be a low-impact, we're, we're going from five driveways to one on, on 19th Street. We're going from five driveways to zero on 20th Street. This, it's going to be much more controlled access in and out of this property than, than existing.
TechDOT approved the location.
Yes, and TechDOT has approved the location. We've got approvals from the engineers that, that look at this and follow their codes. And so, we've gone through all those processes, talked to city staff, and talked to the engineers at TechDOT and gotten their blessing on this as well. I would also point out that where, where we're asking for a reduction in the rear setback, where those existing buildings are, are over, and we've got a 10-foot setback based on the project, it would require 60 feet, the properties to the south of this, that that is adjacent to are not in opposition of this case.
Where is that map? Keep going. There you go.
Are there any other questions?
Any other questions for staff as of now? Okay. I mean, for applicants, excuse me.
We're here to answer any, any follow-up questions that may come up.
All right. Appreciate it, guys. Okay. Is there anyone here speaking opposition on this?
Go figure.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Cindy Prattis. I've lived at 3118 20th Street for 25 years. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of Planning and Zoning Commission, the planning staff, Kristin, Ashley, y'all have been tremendous, y'all have been very, very helpful. And Megan with the records, they've been terrific, really trying to help us understand and get the information we need in order to present fact-based arguments. Appreciate your time, appreciate everybody who's here tonight. I am the president of the Tech Terrace Unit Neighborhood Association. University, 19th, Indiana, and 34th Streets form the boundaries of our neighborhood. The underlying message of the neighborhood is that if somebody cares about you, it's possible that you'll care about others. You are special, and so is your neighbor. That part is essential, that you're not the only special person in the world. You may have already picked up on this, that's a quote from Fred Rogers. A neighbor was asked recently why he cared so much about this development, as it's not even near his house and won't affect him. His reply, whatever impacts one person in our neighborhood impacts us all. That's what neighborhoods are. It's also been mentioned that we only care about a small portion of Tech Terrace. And from the input I've received, the volunteer hours spent on this, the turnout at the November meeting, as well as this one, I think that's just simply not true. We care about our square mile, as well as the neighbors around us. Heart of Lubbock, we work with them on a lot of occasions. If you live in or own property in the TT unit neighborhood, would you please stand and remain standing? If you're not from our neighborhood, but you're here to support our efforts, would you please also stand? Great. Thank y'all for being here. Please be seated. And from the input I've received, the volunteer hours spent on this, the turnout at the November meeting, as well as this one, I think that's just simply not true. We care about our square mile, as well as the neighbors around us. Heart of Lubbock, we work with them on a lot of occasions. If you live in or own property in the TT Unit neighborhood, would you please stand and remain standing? If you're not from our neighborhood, but you're here to support our efforts, would you please also stand? Great. Thank y'all for being here. Please be seated. I'd also like to recognize Cheryl Gonzalez, who organized volunteers to hand-deliver flowers to over 1,800 homes across our neighborhood. I thank them and all who are here and everyone who sent letters for their time and support as well. Thank y'all again. I don't know about anybody else, but it feels like Groundhog Day. Here we are again. We risk being repetitive because we feel this proposal is not dissimilar to the one that was brought before you in November. We plan to emphasize once more those issues that we think are still critical to the decision you make by your vote this evening. After carefully reviewing the minutes from the November 3rd meeting and the discussion that y'all had after the motion to approve was made, most of your concerns that you expressed that I got from those minutes, when you voted that motion down, those concerns, they still exist. Mr. Bus and Mr. Hardburger have objectives associated with maximizing return on investment. This is business. We understand that. But I do feel that this has turned into a us-against-them competition. While it is truly us for the neighborhood, I consider George and his wife Teresa friend, my dealings with Mr. Bus have been very favorable. But it is difficult to keep emotions out of the fray when you feel like your neighborhood and your neighbors are being challenged. Fortunately, the City of Lubbock's created for the Planning Department a very distinct, well-defined mission, as well as zoning codes and directives. The city has also adopted Plan Lubbock 2040. This is all in order to help keep a checks and balances between maximizing return on invest, investment and protecting its citizens and neighborhoods. An ad hoc committee was formed in September at the request of the Neighborhood Association. This committee is composed of 10 members with varying backgrounds and expertise. We have two law professors, three tech professors, two engineers, a business owner, a scientist, a past covenant senior VP and United Way Chair. Those committee members have a combined residency in the neighborhood in excess of 200 years. This committee has powerful credentials. Countless hours have been spent by each member researching and questioning in order to find facts supporting a reasonable argument against this proposed zoning change. I'd like to introduce or reintroduce this committee. Stand if you're, if, if, stand if you're here, some are out of town. Don Fleming, Alastair Hamilton, Ty Crotler, James Mahan, Richard Murphy, John Ross Norton, Sharon Prather, Joe Rapier, Don Richards, and Bill Tortorelli. Thank y'all. I owe you a big thank you because as president of the Tech Terrace Neighborhood Association, there are a lot of, uh, a lot of demands, a lot of questions that are made, and this committee made this evening, um, a whole lot more, more bearable for me. We've received very positive feedback about the potential for development in this area. The hope is for something that will showcase the history and the beauty of this small corner of Lubbock, something that will benefit Lubbock residents and draw the positive attention of those visitors to our city. Please remember, Tech Terrace Unit is pro-development. We wish to utilize and we emphasize the need to follow your guidelines and the rules that have been adopted by the City of Lubbock. We plan in our presentation to stick to the facts, trying to leave emotion aside, although I'm emotionally spent over this. We ask that all who speak be respectful of the process, the commissioners, the planning staff, and respectful of those who may speak both for and against this change. We have five members of the committee who will present details from our research. These individuals have raised, are currently raising, or preparing to raise their families in our neighborhood. They each have their own personal reasons to protest, but they're speaking tonight on behalf of the Neighborhood Association. The following breakdown will be the motion to dismiss and perhaps why we respectfully declined the meeting with Up Campus. That will be presented by attorney Don Richards. We'll hear information about the legal errors in the application. That will be presented by Professor Administrative Law, Richard Murphy. We will get information about the traffic issues we anticipate. That will be presented by Professor of Mathematics, Alastair Hamilton. We will have statistics on tech's growth, the rental occupancy and den, density, presented by Professor of Classics, Bill Tortorelli. Then Plan Lubbock 2040, the Planning Department Mission Statement and Code Considerations will be presented by J.R. Norton, who's an engineer and VP of Operations with Norton Drilling. That's a big, that's a big group. That's a lot of, a lot of information. So, we're gonna be quick, we're gonna try to get out of here quickly. I think at this point, I will turn it over to Don to start the balance of our presentation. Thank y'all again.
Thank you, Ms. Prattis. Ladies and Richards?
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, we appreciate your time this evening, especially knowing you're all volunteers. My name is Don Richards. I live at 3105 20th Street. I've lived in Tech Terrace for in excess of 40 years now. Raised both my children there and sent them to school there. As Cindy introduced me, I am a private attorney here in town. I also teach at the law school, but I've been in private practice here for, uh, too many years. But I would like to say that I am not being compensated tonight. I'm, I'm not being paid to be an advocate for Tech Terrace, although I am here representing them. I'm here, my interests lie solely with the best interest of the neighborhood where I reside and where I have a house. So, I'm not, not receiving any compensation, even though that's kinda unusual for an attorney. I wanna make that point. Last time I was here, I spoke a little in-depth about the history of the neighborhood, and I'm not gonna go into that in any great depth tonight, other than to remind you that, you know, we have clearly the most historic neighborhood in the City of Lubbock, the most diverse one. You know, I mentioned and told what diversity we've had, all the type of activities we have to encourage people and to provide for the neighborhood. You know, uh, everybody decorates for Halloween, and we have kids from all over town come for Halloween, and we have Christmas tour. We have a cleanup day every year. We have concerts in the park. We have kite-flying contests. We have all of those type of things to keep the neighborhood together and cohesive. This is a historical neighborhood. It was built in connection with Texas Tech right after Tech was, and many of us live in historic houses. I, I bought the Adobe houses that Professor Holden built back in the 1930s, and remodeling them has been a, a chore, and we've put some pretty good money into it, but we think we see other people doing the same thing, restoring this, because they like the neighborhood, they like the schools, they like the compatibility that we have with each other. I wanna impress upon the commission, if I can, this is a huge building that Up Campus is talking about putting here. It's not a small one. It was gonna dwarf anything over there now, and it will dwarf the Godbo Center. It is 450 feet long east to west. That's a football field and a half. It is deeper, it goes back all the way to the alley, I think a, a short, uh, offset, but it goes back all the way to the alley. It's, it's 200 feet, uh, deep. That's wider than a football field. This building would not fit inside Jones Stadium. The floor of the stadium is 30 feet below ground level. You know, my seat's up on kind of high, I'm about, I've calculated, I'm about 28, 29 feet above the concourse, above ground level, so I'm, I got 30 feet down the stadium and then another 28 feet above that. If I'm sitting in my seat, which is near the top of the regular stadium, not the suites, not the press box, with this building set there, I could not see anybody on the other side of the stadium. I want you to understand how big this is, and we're taking this building, this huge building, larger, so big, 450 long, it won't fit on the floor of the stadium. We have to go up about 25, 30 feet into the stands, both directions, that are a few feet on the sides. It covers all the green and into the stands. We're gonna take that huge building and set it over there, right up against 19th Street and, and where that Godbo property is. You see the large green block on top, it will occupy every bit of that except for a 10-foot offset, all the way full-length. And again, it's hard to get a picture of that just looking at a box, but that's a two-block area. This, this, uh, facility they're gonna build is nearly a full-block long, and in fact, it's longer than many city blocks, many of the city blocks in the City of Lubbock. That's how big it is, and that's what we wanted to impress on. Today, I wanna focus particularly, though, on Up Campus's application process, and as Cindy mentioned, this is the fourth application that they filed. Through that four applications, they filed four different proposals. They've withdrawn several of the applications and filed new proposals each time. Uh, last Thursday or Friday, I believe it was, they took this proposal and amended it, added about eight or nine more pages to it. So, that's five proposals they filed. They filed four applications, they filed five proposals now. This is the third public hearing that this body has had to endure on a public hearing process. I'm like, uh, Cindy, it sure sounds a whole lot like Groundhog Day. How many ti, how many bites do they get at the apple? You know, you, you'd think to have that many shots at the apple, there ought to be a law against that. And come to think of it, there is. There's a zoning ordinance against that. You can't keep coming back and back and back to wear people out. It's just taxing on the commission, it's taxing on the staff, it's taxing on everybody here, 'cause they just keep coming back. It's essentially the same application and the same proposal. They changed some numbers, but again, if you recognize the huge building they're putting there, it doesn't change the basic facts that we've complained about. They said we denied them a, a chance to meet with them. We've met with them every time. This time, they filed their application back in December tw, December 20th. They didn't call us until a little week and a half ago. It was the day before we were getting ready to file a motion to dismiss. We talked about being with them, but we felt that's a little ingenuous to be, be agreeing to meet with them and then turn around and file a motion to dismiss. The go, the zoning ordinance, 40.01.05(c)(4), says that when the applicant brings an application to this, a zoning change to this body, the planning and zoning, and is denied, it has to go to the city council to get that either approved or overturned. This was set on the city council agenda for November, December, right after the November 3rd meeting. They withdrew it voluntarily. When they did, they sealed their fate, because then it says, anybody that's been turned down by this commission and hasn't had that turned down, overturned by the city council, then it says, that petition, that application shall not be submitted again to this body, and this body shall not consider it. Now, that's a jurisdictional argument. It's, it's, it's not, not may language, it's shall language. So, that's the basis upon which our motion to dismiss has been based. This is not an unusual provision in law. In criminal law, we've got what we call double jeopardy. If the district attorney, uh, tries a murder suit against somebody and he loses, he can't fi, go back and file it again the next day. In civil court, if I get injured in a car wreck, I sue the person who injured me, and I lose, I can't turn around and file it again the next day. It's called race de la carta. We have a way of stopping that. It's true in administrative law, too. That's what we pointed out in the motion that we filed. In administrative law, you've got this provision. Not only that, Amarillo has a provision, Wichita Falls has a provision, Abilene, San Angelo, Midland, Odessa, Texcana, we mentioned a number of cities in our brief, all of them have these same type of provisions that you just can't keep presenting the same basic project, and they said, well, they changed their plan, and they have changed it five times. Problem is, that doesn't go to the ordinance. Ordinance said, if you come back on the same piece of property, you go look at all four applications, the property hadn't changed. I think it probably, you know, should be substantially changed. I think I would give it a little leeway, but they hadn't even tried to change it even an inch. It fits the exact description for property in each one of the applications. It falls squarely under section 40.01.05(c)(4), which means they cannot, they're, they're not allowed to resubmit it, and we would contend this commission under the shall-not language, shall-not consider it, and so we would urge again the motion to dismiss. This is a Chicago-based firm. They've done 14 of these projects. Now, they know how to do it. They know how to give us, you know, all the greater detail, 'cause they've done many of these, everything from traffic to zoning to infrastructure. They know how, how 500 or 600 more people are gonna impact the infrastructure and the water, but we don't have any of those details in here. So, we've got the same process going over and over again. We had, uh, some, yeah, I mentioned part about, we, we declined to meet with them 'cause we felt that was disingenuous, but we would love to meet with them before they file a plan, not after. After they file a plan, then they're, I would argue, they're bound to it, as, as y'all extracted from them, they're married to it, and they promised to be married to this one if you guys approve it. But they come to us afterward. There's no negotiation, there's no meeting. They come to us wanting us to accept it, just period. It's not negotiated. They've come to us ahead of time, and of course, we've been very clear, we've laid out our concerns. Our concerns are not really addressed. They've made some decorative, they put lipstick on a pig, as we might call it, but they haven't really changed the basic problems that we've addressed with them and haven't agreed to address those. Let me mention one other thing that's come up, 'cause we noticed, uh, earlier that when they announced the number of people in opposition to this, it was like 170, something, 177, and I believe 171 were from outside the area. I teach the telecommunications law course at Texas Tech. Part of that is social media. I teach about social media law. I tell all the kids the issues that come up with social media law. What's taking place here, we've been keeping track of them. I know Instagram, I don't like it, and I don't like Instagram Facebook, but I teach it. They're going online and they're offering, asking people to come and sign petitions. They run here, "Sign our petition, support new housing." These are all going, at which we can tell, at least to sororities and places like that, and they're offering in some cases $1,000 if they'll sign the petition and send them in. Now, th, th, we don't like that kinda crap. And then we don't wanna do it, and I teach, and I te, I try to tell my people, don't do that. I try to teach the kids, you know, how to watch for that, and that's what's going on a lot with social media. We don't wanna make a big point out of that, but we would ask the commission to take that into consideration and, and accept it for what it's worth. All the people that protested this are people largely, I'd say 99% of them, that live in Tech Terrace. They come here because they're interested in this. We don't pay people to come, we only pay me to come up here and make these type of arguments. So, we would ask the commission, at this time, I would move again, reurge that you, uh, look at the motion to dismiss and approve it. I appreciate your time and attention, especially your service, and I'll call on Mr. Murphy to come up and also address other legal issues.
Mr. Murphy?
Uh, Richard Murphy, 2911 20th Street. There's a PowerPoint presentation that I supplied you. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the commission, thank you so much for your time. I know this has been a, a very long process. Before I start working through some of the legal objections, additional legal objections other than the jurisdictional one to the plan, I, I thought I'd start with a little issue of fact. So, we understand that the investors in this property, the developer, they wanna maximize their profits, and the way to maximize profits is to have as many apartments on the 19th Street property as possible. We, we get it. All right. But they wanna tell a story, too. And that story has to do with, well, how could you get in the way of dear Texas Tech? What are you, against Texas Tech? And they provided, and actually, maybe a little odd, you may think for my PowerPoint slides to include their chart, but they provided this chart, um, showing growth, actual growth of tech through 2021, and, and then expected growth 2026. Uh, and I was a little curious, because this didn't really match the sorts of things that I've been hearing about declining student enrollments or difficulty keeping enrollments up. To a degree, Texas is somewhat immune from that process because it's a high-growth state. But still, it, it didn't quite jive, and I thought, well, this actually is super interesting. I think I'll look up the website that they cite. And you go to that website, uh, and there are some charts about diversity and, and other measures of, of the recent student body. Uh, nothing about, uh, enrollment, you know, increases or declines, but there is an enrollment button, and if you push that enrollment button, you get this chart. And, you know, obviously, the font is, is too small for us to know, but it doesn't have any projections of future growth. It stops with actuals for fall 2022, and it shows a small decline from fall 2021 to fall 2022. So, all that business you heard about, oh, well, we must support tech's growth. I guess they were leading with their chin. You actually look at the website, and this is what you find. You actually look at the website, and this is what you find. And this is the kind of experience that you have when you look up things that Up Campus asserts, as I think you'll see in a moment. So, there's their conception of the building. You know, we here in the neighborhood, I think I can say there's a consensus, we think it's too big. You can see, actually, it's quite nice of them. If you look closely, there are the little people that provide some scale. A particular point about its size, well, let's connect it to, planned developments have outdoor spaces. Like, the classic planned development is like a planned subdivision, you have some public park spaces, I don't know, maybe a little golf course, you set up the houses, and maybe there's some commercial outlets there. It's a planned community. They have outdoor spaces. One of the outdoor spaces for this building is a pool and party area on the roof that is 60 feet above the neighborhood. One can imagine that it would be a wonderful place to spend a warm afternoon, and maybe many people will, and they will have panoramic views of Texas Tech to the north, and panoramic views of dozens of backyards to the south. Of course, people who want some privacy could not use their backyards, or perhaps they can move away from Tech Terrace. So we think it's too big, but much, much more to the point. So does the law. All right, so, a bit of a moving target with regard to the required setback on the front, you know, because it depends upon the average of the neighboring buildings, and I went out with a tape measure. I came up with 33 feet, but I'm not a professional, maybe I wasn't measuring the right stuff. And the proposal from, most recent proposal from Up Campus, they came up with 30 feet, and now staff has gotten 25 feet. If we go with Up Campus's 30 feet, then we have a building 450 feet long by, with a 10-foot deviation, 4,500 square feet. Cut that in half, if city is correct, it's 25 feet. But what's much more interesting, actually, is what's going on in the back. I hope you'll bear with me for a moment because I'm going to be working from Up Campus's actual proposals. They've been corrected and helped to an extent by staff, I believe, so this is working off their proposals. So in the November, December, and January proposals, Up Campus characterizes the setback requirements, this appears on their table, for commercial apartment, base zoning district CA requirement, none except five feet to any street adjacent to R1 shall be one foot. That's what it says. Three times, at least three. They concede a deviation. Yes, but existing Godbowl buildings are 3.5 over property line. How can you manage a deviation if there's only one foot requirement? That seems kind of remarkable. Well, in each of those tables, it turned out they left out a bit of the ordinance that staff has cleaned up for them. Where the property is adjacent to any R1 zoning district, even if separated by an alley, the minimum rear yard shall be one foot for each one foot of total height. It apparently slipped their minds. So, well, it's not quite 60 feet, it's 59 feet 11 inches in height, I hope we can just go with 60. Staff did point out that this only affected a stretch of the property. That stretch near, as I can tell using the measuring tool on the GIS app, so maybe I'm off a few feet, is 290 feet long. So they are seeking a 50-foot deviation across 290 feet for 14,500 feet. This slide was, this slide gives you the idea. The proportions are not quite correct because I was working off an older slide that worked off an older proposal, but it gives you the idea. You can see the great big chunk in the back that's the deviation. Now, again, these figures are subject to some correction if city staff is correct about the front setback. You know, it depends on what you're measuring, I guess, exactly between the two adjacent properties. But if you'll bear with me and just go with the 19,000 square feet, that's close to 25% of the 80,000-some square feet that they claim as their footprint. You might think, well, all right, they're asking for a deviation. Oops, I got ahead of myself. I wish I had a, like, a artist's conception from the other side. The back end of this thing will be looming 10 feet across the alley from 290 feet of R1 zoning. I think I, did I mess up? Oh, I missed a slide. I'm sorry about that. So, all right, they want a deviation. It happens to be something like 19,000 square feet. All right, well, you want a deviation. If you are strictly in commercial apartment zoning, well, maybe you go seek a variance from the board of adjustment. Could you do that? No, you could not. You need unnecessary hardship to get a variance. What would be their hardship? They can't build as many apartments as they might like, and they won't make as much money. That's the only thing I can think of, anyway. I mean, and in a business sense, all right, I get it. Texas law has recently defined the circumstances under which financial considerations can justify hardship, a finding of hardship. In exercising authority to grant a variance based on unnecessary hardship, a board may consider, quote, "The financial cost of compliance is greater than 50% of the appraised value of the structure." They are obviously nowhere near Texas requirements, but why am I going on about getting a variance from commercial apartment? The whole point of using the planned development, of course, was to avoid those sorts of restrictions. It's kind of a path to a super variance, maybe. What I've come to understand is that the way to think about planned develops, and by the way, this part of the ordinance was added, as I understand it, to the Lubbock ordinances in 2019, not a lot of institutional history there, by the way. Imagine that Lubbock had just two zones, one purely residential, one purely commercial. Suppose that you wanted to, oh, build a planned community where you could have both, you know, so you'd have some houses, a little golf course, maybe a water park, who knows? You'd like some commercial outlets there, so maybe people don't need to drive so far to get a gallon of milk. You wouldn't be able to do that under the Lubbock zones we've imagined because it's either purely residential or purely commercial. The planned development scheme allows you to mix, to mix uses. What it does not allow, what it expressly forbids, is situations in which you have a zone that allows your use, but you have some dimensional problem. Now, one of the things that's occurred through this grinding process is, we pointed out, that the zoning ordinance required Up Campus to identify deviations and also justify them. They at least have identified deviations. According to their tables, their only deviations from commercial apartment are on setbacks. Thus, the only reason they can't just use commercial apartment is to avoid dimensional requirements. There are not one, but two. You could make a case, three, but two very clear provisions in the PD development ordinance that forbid that. There they are at the bottom of this slide. "The use of PD development regulations shall not be used for the sole purpose of avoiding the quantitative or dimensional requirements for uses that would already be permitted in the base zoning district," exactly what they are trying to do. Or, if that's the belt, here are the suspenders, "the PD development shall not be allowed solely as a means of increasing the density or intensity of development." This proposal is flatly illegal. It is a legal train wreck. Now, and by the way, we pointed this out. We pointed this out back in November. We pointed, I pointed this out in a letter that I was submitting, and I kind of, I suspect that some of our letters get more attention than others, and I kind of think that letter probably got some attention. Did you hear any discussion of this issue, that you cannot use a PD ordinance as a kind of super loophole because you want to escape the dimensional requirements of a base zone? No. Never breathed a word. Now, it's been suggested that, and I get it, you know, like, it's a neighborhood association, you know, we're not one brain, we're hard to negotiate with. I understand people thinking, wow, wow, they're, people are just hostile, they won't agree with anything. Well, if I'm allowed to speak for myself for a moment, I understand that this area needs to be redeveloped, and I hope that the property owners make a decent buck on it as well. But you have to start with a legal plan, right? And it's not the community's fault. All right, so, I mean, anything more is going to be gilding the lily, and forgive me, I'm about to gild the lily. So some additional legal problems with the Up Campus proposal. "The PD ordinance expressly states that there is a duty to document impacts the proposed development will have on public facilities and services, and ways in which these impacts will be mitigated in conjunction with the proposed development, et cetera." Near as I can figure, and they've had, what, like, three, four proposals now where they've, you know, had their chance to respond? Oh, don't worry, I understand the font's way too small. Near as I can figure, I mean, there's some additional stray remarks in what I guess is their proposal, but this seems to be pretty much it. Font's too small to check. Let's zoom in on what they say about electrical. This seems to be what they say about documenting impacts on electrical. "Upgrades to the electrical system will be completed as necessary to accommodate the development." Wait, I tell a lie. There was a little bit more about electrical. There was this business, "The alley will be improved and widened along the length of the project, and power lines along the north side of the alley are intended," all right, there's an intention, "to be undergrounded per discussions with LPL not shared with us." All right, a little more about electrical. I'm not an electrical engineer, but I'm kind of thinking that if you're adding a building 450 feet long, 200 feet wide, 60 feet tall, there may be some implications for the wiring, or for the water, et cetera. Oh, one thing about the alley? There were questions about the alley earlier. Well, it's going to be widened the length of the project. The length of the project does not extend to Boston Avenue or University Avenue. And in fact, at the outlet on Boston, properties on both sides are opposed. So, to suggest that they have documented impacts as required, as expressly required by the ordinance, frankly seems beyond farce. All right, the comprehensive plan. I understand that one of my colleagues will be speaking more about related points about the comprehensive plan. Couple of things about the comprehensive plan, or one thing about the comprehensive plan. All right, so the future land use map of Lubbock Plan, excuse me, Plan Lubbock 2040, as we know, contemplates that 19th Street will be zoned commercial like retail, 20th Street will be low-density residential, i.e., single-family. Up Campus seeks high-density apartment complex on 19th and multifamily five-bedroom rowhouses on 20th. All right. Again, another slide, way too many words, far too small a font. If you look, and I think it's on page 62 of the comprehensive plan, you will see a list of questions that are supposed to be asked and answered based upon materials submitted to staff by applicant if you're going to depart from the future land use map. Let's just stipulate, that's a lot of them. We won't go through every one of them, or any of them. Plan Lubbock even bowls this language. "It is the burden of the planning staff to study evidence and make a recommendation to the commission that the proposal meets the aforementioned considerations, i.e., all those questions and answers, and supports community goals and objectives as set forth within this plan. The planning staff should conduct small or specific area studies to determine the appropriateness of requested changes." Are we following the comprehensive plan's instructions or not? This is what the city's recommendation says about conformance with the future, excuse me, the comprehensive plan. You've already heard it. I just want to point out one sentence, I put it in red. "The proposed zone change," this is, I guess, the analysis, "the proposed zone change to CA with a PD would be in conformance with the commercial designation as it would allow a mixed use of commercial and apartment living." Pause for a moment. Does that actually make any sense? That apartment is consistent with commercial? But that's the paragraph. I assume that that responds to the, I think I counted 12, 12 questions and answers that you're supposed to deal with in departing from the future land use map, and of course, these bolded duties. Next issue. Now, this is one that I haven't brought to your attention before. It's because I began to appreciate it in discussing, you know, this planned development, this proposal, with people in the neighborhood, including people within the 200-foot zone where they received notice. Now, in the usual zoning case, a zoning notice only needs to say, we're thinking about going from R1 to R3. And because that's all legally defined, people should understand, well, that means if they approve R3, anything consistent with R3, well, that's going to be okay. And if someone wants to depart from that, seek a variance, there will be additional notice and additional process, right? So you don't need much in a kind of standard notice of that sort. But in a PD case, things are different. In the PD case, the nature of the project is integrally bound up, you know, with, well, what's up for approval? Right? So, 2013 20th Street, I think it's 2013 20th Street, I may be off. The listed owner is the estate of Steve Holyfield. There's an address, a contact for persons to contact. Lisa Holyfield is listed. She lives in Midland, that's all I know about her, I've not contacted her. One thing I'm morally certain of, though, is if she received a notice saying, and this would be the notice that she received, and I very loosely paraphrase, well, we have these zoning designations now, but, you know, we're thinking about shifting to a PD with a CA. That person would have absolutely no idea that what was at stake was the building of a building 450 feet long, 200 feet wide, 60 feet tall, that would loom over the neighborhood. They'd have no idea at all. And that means notice was bad. So it turns out that for notice to be good, and this is due process law that's existed for time out of mind, you need to tell people what the stakes are. Forgive a quote, "The general rule is that the notice is sufficient if it reasonably apprises those for whom it was intended of the nature of the pending proposal to the extent that they can determine whether they should be present at the hearing." How would Lisa Holyfield know whether or not to be present in this hearing based upon that type of notice? Incidentally, in the case that I'm citing on remand, the court held that notice of a PD was defective where it did not provide notice of the possibility that a big box store would be allowed. Notice was bad. All right, my last topic, and thank you for being so patient. Parking. This is not so much a claim of a legal violation as it is, if I may say, a warning. So in late January, their January 26 proposal, Up Campus finally provided the information necessary to determine whether or not they were supplying sufficient residential parking units to comply with base zone requirements. You need to supply the number of studios, one bedrooms, and two-plus bedrooms in order to do that. In the December proposal, they don't even say the number of bedrooms on 19th Street. So of course, they didn't say the number of studios, one bedrooms, and two-plus bedrooms. How did we find out? Actually, a member of the committee emailed staff, and they have been great. They've been super responsive and quick, and through all this contentious process, and, you know, that's been terrific. Oh, you can find the number if you look at the trip generator study that passes for their traffic study. I suspect it's significant that it wasn't appearing in what we've been characterizing as their proposal. In any event, to answer the parking objection, they had to pony up how many units of which type. And they did. And although I continue to, well, no, it's just a fact, they have done the wrong calculations with regard to non-residential parking. If you add up the number of spots they have that they propose, I believe that number of spots is consistent with the requirements of commercial apartment zoning. So I must be congratulating them for fixing something. Why discuss parking now? Because, and I believe it's page 17 of the January 26 proposal, and I'm afraid I didn't see if it featured in the version that was shown by staff, there's a footnote. "The number of units by unit type is approximate, subject to change under the PD." Well, what does that mean? Aren't we kind of determining the PD now? Well, the PD, the concept plan is not the last stop, the final plan is. And if you can avoid making a commitment of any sort in the concept plan, then what binds you in the final plan? If the December proposal had come in unamended, not mentioning the number of bedrooms, what exactly would you have been approving? Well, they did say the number of bedrooms, the number of units, that allowed them to fix the parking objection. But then they dropped this footnote, "subject to change..." But then they dropped this footnote, subject to change under the PD. Maybe they're going to explain that this is all paranoid fantasy on my part. Perhaps it is. But these are the same people who did not include the number of bedrooms in the December At least, I couldn't find it, and I checked again last night. I had a fit of paranoia. Oh, my God. I looked, didn't see it. So you might consider in adopting, you know, if you approve the concept plan, what exactly does it mean to say, well, we have these many bedrooms, but it's subject to change under the PD? Page 17 of the January 26 proposal, I believe. A side note. Well, is it a side note? There's actually quite a bit of flexibility, by the way, going from concept plan to final Under the ordinance, this would be a right of theirs, under the ordinance, you can approve minor modifications. Let's see, did I, yes, there we are. Third bullet there. The director of planning can, with near as I can tell, no public process, authorize quantitative changes of 10% along various metrics as minor modifications. So the commission may want to consider just how binding, you know, what they are approving if they approve, as well as how binding it would actually be. So I did say, and I did apologize that I'd be guilting the lily. The plan's proposal as it relates to setbacks is flagrantly illegal. And of course, we have these other problems as well. We have Up Campus's refusal to deal with its express legal duty to document public facility impacts. I mean, for a Chicago developer, do they get to pick and choose which Lubbock laws apply? Neither Up Campus nor the city make any effort to follow the analytical process that is required by the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan, the future land use map are not strictly binding the way, say, a zoning ordinance would be, but a complete failure to follow it is grounds for invalidating a zoning ordinance. If you think about the notice, if you think about, say, Ms. Holyfield in Midland, would she have any idea what's at stake here? If your answer to that is no, then notice was bad. And, you know, and was I stretching with the number of bedrooms, the footnote? Well, this is all based, you know, frankly, on an understanding of looking at these proposals over the course of months. I suppose I should ask you, I'll be happy to try to answer any questions. Any questions for Mr. Murph?
Thank you sincerely for your time. And I, no, I guess I'll just, I was about to editorialize more. I'm not going to do that. Thank you very much, all of you.
All right, I want to talk a bit about the traffic.
Three minutes ago, Lubbock, notification, calendar, on.
And if you'll start with your name and address, please.
Oh, yes. My name is Dr. Alastair Hamilton. I live at the intersection of 20th Street and Detroit. I want to talk a bit about the traffic situation, and I'm going to talk a little about the traffic analysis that was provided by Kimberly Horn. Although it has some unfortunate flaws, it does corroborate a lot of the concerns that we raised last time about the traffic problems. One of the, one thing I want to point out, one of the first things you notice if you look at this report, this is the percentage of outgoing and incoming traffic that turns these various intersections, is that 59% of all traffic goes through, if you add up all the percentages, 59% of traffic goes through the University and 19th intersection. 66% of all traffic goes through the Boston and 19th intersection. More traffic goes through the Boston and 19th intersection, yet no analysis is done of the Boston and 19th intersection. Okay? The entire impact analysis of the, of the report is done on the University and 19th intersection. Boston and 19th is not mentioned at all, even though more traffic passes through that Now, if you notice, if you add up both of these percentages, it comes to more than 100%. Why does it add up to more than 100%? Well, because a substantial amount of the traffic that flows through these intersections passes through both intersections. Okay? And this is because the analysis assumes that the traffic flow will be facilitated by performing U-turns at the University and 19th intersection and the Boston and 19th intersection. And we talked about this a bit last time, and so I'm not going to repeat everything I said last time. I assume that you remember most of what I said. Now, how, what sort of percentage of U-turns does it predict? 36% of all outgoing traffic is performed by U-turn at University and 19th. 25% of all incoming traffic is performed by U-turn at Boston and 19th. Okay? Now, how many U-turns actually is that? And how does it compare to what is going on at the intersection at the moment? Okay? So I went out there and I took a video. I sat there for about half an hour, 10 o'clock on a Thursday, to count the number of U-turns that were performed there. And I spit it out. I didn't have a half-hour video for you, so. Okay, so there's one on the left, one on the right.
Excuse me, could you just cut to the chase on this?
Okay, sure. There are, we'll get to the end, so. I sat there for just over half an hour, two U-turns at the north and south ends, one U-turn at the east end, zero U-turns at the west end. Now, the west end has some construction on, so maybe people didn't perform a U-turn there because there was construction there. So take the average, assume there was no construction there, there'd be 1.67 U-turns there. Okay? Now, what does the Kimberly Horn analysis predict for the number of U-turns at this intersection? In the same time period, 10 U-turns at this intersection by people exiting the building. Okay? That's about one every three minutes at this particular time of day, increasing throughout the day until by 5:00 p.m. there's one U-turn being performed here every two minutes by people exiting the building. Similar volume at Boston and 19th intersection. All right. Now, what does the, what does the traffic impact analysis actually do? It uses the Highway Capacity Manual to address the operational impacts on those intersections. One thing that it does not do is to address the safety impacts. The Highway Capacity Manual specifically states that the methods of the Highway Capacity Manual are not intended to address safety issues. The number of U-turns that are going to be performed at this intersection is a significant safety issue that is going to not affect just the people in the neighborhood, but anyone who uses 19th Street at those intersections. All right. Coming back to the analysis that they actually did, they used the Texas Department of Transport database, the number of vehicles that were approaching that intersection, to try and assess what the operational impacts would be on that intersection. There's, you know, how is it going to affect traffic moving through that intersection, congestion, delays, et cetera, et cetera. It says that they did it in conjunction with information provided by the City of Lubbock. I checked, I made an open records request. They said no records exist for that. So we can assume that they did this entirely on the basis of the Texas Department of Transport, Texas Department of Transportation Star's database. The reason I mention this is that, this is the information from the Texas Department of Transport Star's database. All of this information is very old. Okay? The, the information for those things approaching the west and the east side, that information is from 2012. This information is not from 2022, as it was claimed in the traffic report. It's from 2012. It's over a decade old. It's not appropriate to put data that is over a decade old into a model and expect it to analyze the situation that is currently present at the intersection. And I would have gone out and collected some of my data myself, but with the construction that is present on 19th Street at the moment, it's not possible to get an accurate picture of what is going on at the intersection because many people are avoiding that area at the moment. Okay. Now, what about the Boston and 19th intersection that was completely left out of the impact analysis? I went out there and I made some measurements. So people who want to turn left going westbound on Boston and 19th, the Boston and 19th intersection, there is a signal there. It has 45 seconds of a permitted operation, where you're allowed to turn against oncoming traffic if there's a gap, followed by just five seconds of a protected signal. Now, I did some calculations using the Highway Capacity Manual. Under the protected, when the, when the traffic light gives you a protected signal, do the calculations according to the Highway Capacity Manual, you can expect about 30 vehicles a minute to pass through that intersection. That means that if you lined up a long queue of vehicles and you stopped all this traffic moving eastwards, they would pass through that intersection about 30 vehicles a minute. Now, what happens in the permitted phase, when you allow this oncoming traffic to move towards you, at peak hour, this goes all the way down to just 2.77, like, a 10-fold reduction. And in fact, that is the actual minimum that the Highway Capacity Manual lets you use because it assumes that some people will always sneak across at the end of a light. So what, basically what I'm telling you is something that would not be any news to people here, and that is that if you go to this intersection at 5:00 p.m., you try and make a left turn here, under the permitted phase, it'll be very, very difficult, and you'll probably have to wait for the, for the protected phase, for the green light. And this information, in order to calculate that, you need to use the traffic flow, and that is actually from 2021, so much more recent information. Okay? Now, what does the Kimberly Horn analysis say will happen for the U-turn? It says that at 5:00 p.m., there'll be one U-turn here about every three, every three minutes. In fact, a little bit more than that. This is how the developer proposes to move the incoming traffic into the building by having people perform a U-turn against this very intense peak oncoming traffic under a permitted phase of, of a traffic light. They're supposed to wait there for 45 seconds to find a gap in the traffic and perform a U-turn into it, when it's almost impossible to do it, almost impossible to do a left turn there until the protected phase. Okay? At the protected phase, of course, if you're doing a left turn, you can just go do a left turn. If you're doing a U-turn, you have to give way to anyone who's making a right turn on red. So that presents the fact that the entire cycle might fail, that someone who's wanted to do a U-turn there, wait for the protective phase, have to give way to someone making a right turn on red, and the whole cycle would have to go over again. It's the sort of thing that can put the intersection over capacity. Now, this is just not safe from, from a safety perspective. What about an operational perspective? How is it going to affect the congestion at this site? So I did an analysis. I went out, I took some, some videos, I counted the number of people who turned left at these intersections in this period. Okay? So from these various videos, this, if I add all these up, there are nine vehicles in seven minutes, 30 seconds, that's about 75 vehicles per hour. Now, there's actually one person there who actually gave up to turning left because there was just so much traffic. So maybe if we don't count him, that's eight. Divided by, now, you have to adjust for a peak hour factor. That puts 81, 72 vehicles an hour. That gives us a range of about 67 to 81 vehicles per hour that will move through, through that intersection. That went out there, I did some, I collected some data for longer periods, but this is just the period that I have videos for. I collected 70, the data I collected, put it at 74. That's right in the middle of this range. So 67 to 81 vehicles is a good range. Let's see what happens if we do the analysis for this range. Okay, I plotted this graph. On the right axis, that's the, the volume of traffic moving through the intersection. On the left axis, that's the delay. And actually, I have this graph here. I can hand it out to you.
So while you're handing that out, the point you're making is that the traffic signaling isn't adequate as it is today, and adding this project isn't going to improve things. In a nutshell, we don't know all the numbers in traffic counts.
Well, I'll get to it in just a moment. The point that I'm making is that at the moment, it's a level of service D. So in that range that I mentioned, 67 to 81 vehicles per hour, that puts the delay at 44 to 51 seconds. That's level of service D. That's characterized by tolerable delays. Okay? So it says the situation is bad, but it's tolerable. Okay? Now, if you add in the traffic that's coming from the building, for the entirety of that range, it shifts it to a delay of 56 to 65 seconds. That puts in level of service E. That's characterized by unstable traffic flows and intolerable delays. Okay? So this, this traffic flow significantly impacts the operational performance of this intersection.
But so what you're doing, you're disputing the Kimberly Horn report.
No, the Kimberly Horn report didn't analyze this intersection at all.
Okay, that's, that's what you're.
I know, I know, I would dispute it, but they didn't say anything about it.
Well, I got a question for you, too.
Sure.
You're analyzing all this, but how are you factoring in the construction on the intersections now where it's only down to one lane going each way? How are you factoring that in that it's going to be different when it's totally wiped?
Well, that is, that is one of the problems that I mentioned. Okay? It's, it's hard to get a good amount of data when there's construction going on at the moment. Okay? So what happened if there, if there was more, more traffic flowing through the thing is that that would put the intersection closer to capacity. And as you get closer to capacity, you'll get more and more problems. Okay? So the fact that there's a low current traffic volume, which I mentioned here, actually means that this analysis probably underestimates the impacts on the intersection. Okay? The other thing is that I modeled all the U-turns as left turns. Now, to perform a U-turn is significantly, significantly more difficult than performing a left turn. Okay? I modeled all U-turns as left turns, but that also probably means that this is an underestimate of the impact on the intersection. The Highway Capacity Manual doesn't give you a way to model U-turns at an intersection. It always assumes that there are small percentage of, of the total volume. Okay? Unlike in this case where it would be a significant percentage. The other thing that I didn't include was the effect of pedestrians. Okay? Turning left at that intersection, people have to give way to pedestrians in the crosswalk. Okay? I assumed that there were no pedestrians there just to make the calculations easier. The other thing is that adding this building in here is going to introduce a lot more pedestrian activity in that area, which means that the impact, operational impact on this intersection is going to be even more significant. Okay? So basically, what I am saying is that these intersections, the one at University and 19th, and particularly the one at Boston 19th, are not intended to accommodate the sort of traffic flow that the developer is proposing, not from a safety perspective and not from an operational perspective. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You, too. So before we start, anybody need an intermission? Y'all need a break?
Five minutes.
We'll give five minutes? Is that enough time? I'll make it three if you want. Five minutes, I can five, no time to get up. I got these restrooms, too. And I need something to drink.
Back at it again. So we'll pick up where we left off. Sorry to cut you off there.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Bill Tortorelli. I live at 3319 29th Street, Tech Terrace, homeowner, parent of a Roscoe Wilson student, speaking opposed to 3471C. I'm going to be quick. I know that we've been through a lot of this. Most of you were here in November. I'll try to not repeat too much, but give you the gist. I wanted to talk a little bit about parking, a little bit about density, a little bit about TTU, and maybe a bit about Up Campus as well. So parking-wise, it's great that they've got all those parking spots now. It is, it is still a huge project, very dense. Adding 12% to the population of this one-square-mile neighborhood and all-in-one block is, is a bit violent, but we can argue about that. I don't think they have enough parking. They do for the residents, but not for their guests. The "traffic, traffic" study, I got to put air quotes around that one, definitely considers all of the driving time that'll be saved by students walking to and from campus, but they're still driving. I mean, it's not a walkable city. They're going to be driving for groceries, they're going to be driving out to the bars and then home again through Tech Terrace. The, the people on 20th The people on Twentieth Street, the people on Twenty-Second Street, particularly nervous about this because to get in and out of this place, you're going through the neighborhood. I say Twenty-Second Street because that's where there's a cut through the median on University, people can turn left there, circle around, and try to squeeze into this behemoth. I know that we're gonna see parking for daytime and overnight guests flooding throughout the neighborhood and just a lot more traffic in and out, but it's really the Twentieth Street buildings that concern me the most for parking and traffic. If you look at those seven little buildings squeezed onto three lots, all of their parking is in the back. Yes, the alley will be widened for the length of this project, but not at either end of that alley. We've got single car width alley, and I'm just picturing those thirty-five people coming and going. It's a nightmare, dumping out onto either Boston or University at two of the busiest intersections in this part of town. Mr. Buss included in the proposal, again, I don't know why, a page from a pamphlet about crime and density, suggesting that crime and density are not correlated, even though I explained in November a bit about the academic research on this topic. The pamphlet itself was produced by an advocacy group for high-density housing, which cherry-picked two ridiculous studies. One, a one-page study in Anchorage, Alaska, intended to demonstrate how to use GIS in crime analysis. The other, an article co-authored by a city planner in Irving, Texas. In November, I quoted the Blackwood Law Enforcement and Management Institute of Texas's study of Texas university towns and crime that is pushed to the margins of campus. Campus security handles campus, and the city is responsible for policing the opportunistic crime that you get with a lot of student cars parked in the vicinity. I think there's definitely gonna be an increased need for police presence in this area. The density on Twentieth Street, those seven little, I'll call them dominos, I guess, seven five-room apartment buildings on three lots, that's just not in keeping with Plan Lubbock 2020 with the future land use map, as you've seen, as you know. You wouldn't let me do that, right? I live on a double lot, can I knock down my house and get variance for putting up four and two-thirds little apartment buildings on my lot? You'd laugh me out of this room. Sarah Cantor and Nick Jackson, you two live right across the street from those little domino houses, and you have a double lot, too. Would you like to buy the house next door and put up seven apartment buildings? Yes. Well, you will want to when it becomes less desirable to live in your house on Twentieth Street, which it's gonna be. Staff described these little domino houses as similar to R1, and I hope you can see how dissimilar they are. Mr. Buss said that they're laid out like single-family homes, but you would never grant zoning permission to build single-family homes like that. I got in November into increased cost for the city, that yes, there'll be a little bit of tax revenue coming in, but the costs of maintaining the streets like Twentieth, that'll be, need to be repaved more frequently, the extra policing, costs associated with traffic accidents, and don't tell me you don't think that would be more. Basically, rezoning these lots amounts to a subsidy from the city to Up Campus housing. I believe you read that in Dr. Heatherington's letter about this, pointing out that changing zoning for them is giving them a big pile of cash from the city. They talked a whole lot about TTU enrollment. Is TTU enrollment going up? Well, their own chart shows that it's going up less each year. We know nationally that college enrollments are plateauing, especially at four-year colleges, more so than at two. Is it your job to make sure that Tech has enough housing for its students? Tech is important to the city, absolutely, but their own data in their petition showing diminishing growth flies in the face of that a little bit. And I did an informal study of various apartment complexes in the fall, ten very near, walking distance from campus, and four out of ten had occupancy below ninety-six percent. This week, on Tuesday, we had a housing fair at Tech where the renters were just begging for students to come live there, they were giving all sorts of signing bonuses and that sort of thing. The student apartments available in the neighborhood at houses, you know, regular old houses, not big giant high-rises, we have more than thirty vacancies currently in the neighborhood. That's just Realtor.com, I haven't checked all of the various ways that these apartments are being advertised. Tech needs student housing perhaps, but it definitely needs Tech Terrace. The university needs this neighborhood. A single-family home neighborhood with great schools in walking distance of campus is one of the top recruiting tools that Tech has for faculty. I live in Tech Terrace, I would still be living in Philadelphia, teaching at Temple University if I didn't have the option of coming to a place I could raise my child in a neighborhood with a great school near campus, and this is the last one, right? This is the last thing that Tech's got. If you let massively dense apartment complexes encroach into this neighborhood, it's going to make fewer families want to live there. That will kill the international baccalaureate programs at Roscoe Wilson Elementary, at Hutchinson Middle, two fantastic schools. Once those decline, no faculty are gonna, no academics are gonna want to move to Lubbock. And what's gonna happen then? All the students are going to recognize the falling charms of TTU, and I think they're just gonna all go to A&amp;M. And it's up to you to stop that from happening. It's up to you to stop the drain that is going to kill the neighborhood. This, I won't wax eloquent about the neighborhood, you're gonna hear that from a lot of the people behind me, about how great it is, all the things that we do, you heard some of that from Don, but take it from a professor who saw this neighborhood and the schools there as one of the main reasons to come here to Lubbock when I did. I wanted to tell you a little bit about Up Campus, I shared in November some of the things I learned about them. They shared with us some comparable developments that I don't think are all that comparable, like a building at the University of Minnesota, built in one of the oldest neighborhoods in Minneapolis, which was already eighty-six percent rental and industrial, and that building replaced factories. It wasn't standing next to single-family homes. At the University of Oregon, 1180 Patterson Street, smaller, three hundred eighty beds. The community supported it because they needed low rental housing, and it's next to a hospital, a parking garage, some campus buildings, and fraternity row. It's not in the middle of a beautiful elementary school district. Third building at Purdue University, West Lafayette, Indiana. The street they were building on, the city was looking for development because the neighborhood is becoming rundown, it was a good place to have people and businesses. Although, in how many of these did businesses open on the bottom floor? We've been looking at that retail space, maybe it's a restaurant, maybe it's shops, who knows? But in some of their buildings, they turned them into apartments, too. If you let Up Campus build, you don't know what they're gonna do with it. I know one thing that they're gonna do with it, they're gonna sell the building within two years to a rent collection agency that's just buying up student housing all over the country. They're gonna sell it, it won't be properly maintained, it'll become some of the worst tenements in the city and continue the degradation of that neighborhood. That neighborhood that, I'm telling you, I'll move. You two, you'll move. And then, when we retire, we won't be replaced by decent faculty because nobody, nobody will want to come to, "What is that? Turn that phone off." And pretty soon, Tech is a skeleton of what it used to be, and all the students go to A&amp;M. Thanks for your time.
All right. Thank you.
Sorry, we had a work problem here. You still having a good time?
Forgive me.
If you could state your name and address, please.
Okay. Hi, my name's JR Norton. I live at 3206 Twenty-third Street. I've kind of labeled them page numbers in the top right, and so some of this I'll skip through quickly because Professor Murphy went through it so nicely. I mean, the first picture on the front is that 450 by 203-foot building, right? That's twenty feet front setback, ten in the back, ten on either side. And that's what the, that's what a football field looks like on top of it. So, you know, when you're shooting it from, we just want to make sure that we realize the scale of what we're putting in our neighborhood. That's a big building. My name's JR Norton, I grew up in Lubbock, I'm thirty-three, I have a two-and-a-half-year-old and one on the way here in a couple months. My wife and I, when we were picking a place to live, we, I grew up here, so I knew about those funky people over, you know, between, you know, in the unit, right? I knew kids from that area, and they were sharp, and they talked a lot about their schools they went to and about the community over there, and so that's why my family lives there. You know, we wanted to be in those schools, around those people, and with those great parks. You know, renters choose to live there for the same reason. There's a renter over here, and there's plenty, I'm sure, more in the room, but renters are students, and they chose to live in that neighborhood to use it as a single-family, to have a single-family residential experience, right? They didn't, just because they're renters doesn't mean they were signing up to be next to a behemoth of a building with, you know, when the assumption is it's gonna stay way more residential. Families move there, like Bill said, for the schools and for the reasons I did. So, and they rent there, too, and renters are residents. The fact that we have renters is not a reason to build a large apartment building, that's not a justification. I just, basically, I'm gonna go through. The project does not conform to the CA or the PD as he went through. I'm not gonna go through all of it, I'm gonna hit it real quick, some of the stuff he missed, if he might have missed a little bit. And everything, I talked to a previous, someone who had previously worked in the Planning and Zoning Department, and they said that the low-density residential and single-family housing, that's the most protected district, right? That's what you guys are here to protect, and that's what the codes are supposed to protect. And it comes up in, right here in the very beginning, or in the comprehensive plan. If you'll flip to the comprehensive plan number one, that's the second page, on neighborhood preservation, I've got highlighted, "It is important that these existing residential areas are protected as the city grows. As development occurs in or near existing neighborhoods, it is important that the products built fit in with the fabric of the existing neighborhoods to protect their identity and character." So it's not just something that, you know, because we're gonna, there's a lot of people that are gonna say that, and it feels, I mean, I'm an engineer, so, you know, when people come at me with emotional arguments, I tend to tune them out a little bit, but that's a requirement, you know, that's something we're stated to do. It's not a feel-good thing, it's something that needs to be actively checked. And then, if you'll flip to the second, the next page, CP2, I've got it labeled in the top right, "The future land use map will be used for daily for reviewing zoning cases." That's by the city staff, all right? "Although the future land map use is not the zoning map, it will be used to inform decisions related to use and zoning." So, that is important, and I checked with somebody on your, I contacted somebody on your committee, and they verified that you guys have, the Lubbock has officially adopted Plan 2040. So this is officially adopted by the city, as far as I understand. Okay? "The Planning and Zoning Commission will use the future land use map in their meetings when discussing," right? So, again, it's important. At the bottom, "Community, when owners and developers seek options for development, the future land use plan outlines options that are consistent with the goals of the community as well as the vision." Well, if you flip to FT1, that's the future land use map, that figure one, okay? This is, this is what we're called to use, right? And we're trying to protect this, and we decided that that block on Nineteenth Street should be commercial light retail. This isn't commercial light retail. Stuff that is built like this is zoned in that brown on the right side, high-density housing. You go look at Overton, and you go look over south of campus or north of campus, those are all zoned this way, right? That new Carlton House has been zoned that way for a long time. And it's a long way from the street, right? These are, this is a different, this is a different, this is a different deal. And then you can see the residential, we've already talked about that, I'm just pointing it out so you've got a visual on it. If you will, flip with me to CA1, okay? I'm just gonna go through, this is the commercial apartment district, okay? I've got it highlighted here, "When proposed development is adjacent to any residentially-zoned property, the proposed development shall be designed to provide for maximum compatibility with the adjacent development. Architectural design, landscaping, screening, and parking areas shall be properly provided to ensure maximum protection of lower-density uses." So, I mean, the point of this is residential is what we're protecting. Call back to that. If we'll go, if you'll flip two pages to the PD, and this is the part I'll skim through pretty quick. If you were, here's kind of the context of what he pointed out, "The PD district shall not be used to circumvent zoning regulations." Okay? And then if you'll go over here to PD2, I'm not gonna read all these, the one and number six are the ones that basically say it twice, right? "You cannot use PD to avoid dimensional or the requirements, or the density requirements of development." You can't use those two. And if you will, now, flip with me to FT, back to FT1, the one with the future land use map. That figure number two, this is kind of what he had, but it hadn't been updated for this new building. My calculation, I went out there with a tape measure and measured from the inside of the sidewalk, I think that's where it's supposed to be. I got, should be thirty-one and a half feet, they're asking for twenty. Those two sections, all right, they combined to be, you should, under CA regulations, you should be able to have seventy thousand six hundred feet, square feet, on that bottom layer, and they're gonna have almost ninety. Okay? That's twenty-seven percent increase in their footprint by trying to use PD, which, as we read in, on page PD2, is blatantly against the rules. I don't want to go on too much more, I mean, I've gone through the, if you go, you can go through all the PD acceptance criteria, that's the stuff that really stands out, that PD2 page. On PD3, we've got an, it says this, though. It says, "Problems with compatibility," this is for permitted uses of PD, "problems with compatibility shall be mitigated through the appropriate site design and usage of developmental standards beyond minimums such as extended buffer yards." And we're talking about, and their request is to eliminate them. And this, the code says that when a PD is used, you should be going more towards the edge of extending the yards than eliminating the base zoning district's requirements. And then, I'm gonna make one more quick deal. If you'll flip to FT2, which is the second-to-last page, this is, if you approach this building from any of the cardinal directions, okay? The traffic analysis was basically how many miles are generated, right? Well, that's not really, we know that we're close to campus, and they're not gonna be driving a long way to campus, we understood that. But what it doesn't point out is if you come from any of the four cardinal directions other than west, you are required to either do a U-turn across Boston, which would be a, that's, this is supposed to be a walkable building, right? So you're coming home with your groceries, you're gonna have to do a U-turn at Boston, and they're gonna have increased pedestrians, right? Or you're gonna cut through the neighborhood. And so, the point is, is there's gonna be a significant increase on the traffic in our neighborhood. The only way to get to this building is you're gonna have to cut back through or do a U-turn, and I'm, if they're like my wife, they're gonna cut through the neighborhood and avoid doing a U-turn. So, that's, it's just not, I don't think it's very honest to say that we're not gonna impact, impact the neighborhood. I mean, you're putting ten percent... Or you're going to cut through the neighborhood. And so, the point is, is there's going to be a significant increase on the traffic in our, in our neighborhood. There, the only way to get to this building is you're going to have to cut back through or do a U-turn and I'm, if they're like my wife, they're going to cut through the neighborhood and avoid doing a U-turn. So that's, it's just not, I don't think it's very honest to say that we're not going to impact, impact the neighborhood. I mean, you're putting 10% more people, our, our neighborhood population is supposed to be between 5 and 6,000. So 600 people, is that right? Is it about that? So 10% on a half-block here. And, you know, we're going to have effects to the electrical, the, you know, the utilities and, and the streets. And I just, what they presented is not a, is not an assessment of what, what it's really going to cost us. I'll just end with this real quick. "It's our belief that this never should have been recommended by the city staff and put in front of P&amp;Z. This development is not compatible with the zoning districts for which they have applied. It is not compatible with the existing neighborhood. It is not compatible with the future land use map that we are supposed to be considering. It's my understanding that decisions like this are the core of your very purpose. If we don't comply with our own codes, why bother defining the zoning districts?" You know, I'm going to be in this neighborhood for a long time. I plan to at least. And so this isn't about, you know, the next 10 years for me. This is about, you know, and then are we going to have to do this again when this building, you know? I'm, I'm already thinking like that because I'm probably going to be, you know, Don's age when we tear, tear what's down, you know? Sorry, Don. Yeah. It might be Don's age when we're doing this again for whatever's been left on this lot. So I just, it needs to be done right because we're going to be living with it for a long time. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. I just want to make one comment because everybody keeps talking about the PD and what it is and what it can't. But if you'll go back up to the very first part, it's talking about the, was put in the comprehensive while allowing for development that could not normally be achieved under conventional zoning.
Okay? Hold on.
You need to consider that too, and I just picked the ones that you want to put to yours.
So wait, say that one more time, sir?
If you want to look at the first paragraph where it's talking about why PDs will put in.
Okay.
While allowing for development that could not normally be achieved under conventional zoning regulations.
Sure. But you can't, right, but you can't do it for dimensional changes, right?
We know it's for dimensional change.
If it's increasing by 27% your footprint, I mean, that's why they're doing it, right? I mean, that's why I would do it. Well, then maybe we ask them to move it back.
We asked them to do it so that we could hold them to a plan so they couldn't just build whatever they wanted.
The PD actually came from us.
Right, but CA, this isn't-
You can't know their motive.
I can't. And CA is also, I mean, this isn't, CA the requirement would be back. That's what we're saying is CA would require you to have a 60-foot setback from that residential area. So, but the PD doesn't allow you to get around that. That's, that's, that's all we're saying.
Yes, I could answer your question.
Go ahead.
So yes, PD is a system for allowing you to achieve different ends than you could under others, under normal zoning, we'll call it. But that means mixing uses that would otherwise not be available under the base zone. And that's why we have two express provisions in the ordinance forbidding its use if it's solely as a means to escape dimensional requirements, which would certainly include setback.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Falk. I'm an architect here in Lubbock, live at 2827 23rd Street, own property at 2808 23rd Street. I hope to build a house someday if the UDC ever gets passed. I'm a partner with MWM Architects and I'm not trying to pat myself on the head, but so some of you may know me, some of you may not. I was one of the architects that designed Buddy Holly Hall. Lots of hoops to jump through. Major impact on the city of Lubbock. I was the designer of the Tornado Memorial, something I'm incredibly proud of. But my background is not only as an architect, I'm a Red Raider by the way, but is also in urban design and I'd like to speak to that here shortly. But I'm going to get picky about some of the dimensions on, on the, on the image you see on the wall. If you look at the three houses on 20th Street on the west end, it has a 15-foot setback. And I believe that's what the code requires for an R1. Except that's supposed to be off the alley. Looks like there's some property between the alley and that garage. And then I, and I must confess, I have creative writing capabilities too, but I couldn't follow some of the, the calculations that were done in this, this study, this report. But a car is supposed to be able to back out of that garage and go straight to the alley, not have to turn to the east to go around and back into the, to the alley. If I understand correctly, there are five bedrooms in each one of those houses, so to speak. Now, one of the scariest events I ever went through in my life is when my three daughters started getting their driver's license. They didn't like to borrow my car or their mother's car and pretty soon I'm being told, I got to get them a car. I don't necessarily buy the notion that there's going to be a lot of people on this project that don't have cars. I think that those persons are going to be more inclined to be on campus. So I look at this document and it says there's 481 cars in that parking structure, but there's 600 beds or units. Where's the other cars parked? It's going to be on 20th Street. The five cars that could potentially go to the houses that are along 20th Street, there looks like, though it's not dimensioned, three cars in each garage. So there's two more potentially. Where are they going to park? They're going to park on 20th Street. So if I did my calculation right, it's either an extra 119 cars that don't have a place to live, if everyone has a car, and I'm sure they all won't, or 86 cars. Where are they going to park? My office does a tremendous amount of retail work. And one of the things that you got, if you're going to sell something, you got to get stuff delivered there. That is a 20-foot alley. Now, I'm told you, the document says it's going to be widened. So the trash is going to be picked up. Let's say it goes to 24 feet wide and I couldn't find what it's supposed to go to. I'm sorry. A trash truck that is private either may flip from the side, may flip over the front or from the back. If it's either the, the, over the front or the back, that vehicle has got to back or pull into that loading dock, will not get in or out. You need probably 50 or more feet to make that work. Now, I know Cory's going to, he's cringing over here because he's going to get mad at me about saying that, but it takes more space than 20, 20 or so feet. That parking structure they're proposing, I'm guessing, because there's no elevations of what it is, that that is an open parking structure. An open parking structure by building code has to have 50% of the exterior wall open so air will circulate through that parking structure and get the carbon monoxide out and dissipate it away. If you look at the previous scheme, it's only got one side that can be opened to the air. If you look at the proposed scheme, there's two. That means that 100% of that opening on the east side and the south side of that parking structure has to be open to get the carbon monoxide out of that open parking structure. That is a real problem because you really need cross-ventilation to do that. Carbon monoxide, as you know, stays on the ground. That's why you want to have it open all the way as much as you can so that if someone changes the oil in their car or changes a tire, they don't get down in the carbon monoxide level and potentially have an impact and a negative effect. I would argue that the notion of the setback for this project, if you're going to take the setback of the structure on the west and the structure on the east, they're measuring to the front of a portico chair. It's a porch. It's not an inhabitable building. The habitable building is more than 60 feet off the property line. I could just look at the parking space width and that's got to be 60 feet. There's some landscaping in, on the south and north side. So let's say it's 60 to 70 feet. Let's use 60 as an example, 20 feet on the other side. By the calculations set up in the, in the zoning code, that's a 40-foot setback, not what they're proposing. That's a real problem. Let's talk about the urban design of Tech Terrace, the urban design of 19th Street. Yes, there's a real tall building on the southeast corner of University and 19th Street. It is an office building. It's owned by Texas Tech. They're exempt from all the various regulations because their, their public entity is above the city of Lubbock. I want you to think about the building we're in. My memory is, I didn't get the job, but I'm pretty sure it's about 100 or 110 feet tall, this tower, citizens' tower. My memory is it's 11 feet floor to floor. This building, I calculate it's going to be 67 feet tall when you throw in a parapet, is maybe two-thirds the height of this building that we're in. I would tell you to take the tower and lay it down, but I don't remember the east-west dimension. But let's think about a 450-foot-long, 65 feet, 67-foot building. In the summer, the sun comes up at about 2 o'clock on your watch, goes around and sets at about 10. All of the houses on the north side of 20th Street are going to be in shade or shadow. That shadow, as the sun is setting in the, in the evening or rising in the morning, is going to extend well to the houses across the street of 20th Street. That is a major impact when you, as an owner of a house, expect to have sunlight come in your house or in your backyard or in your front yard. That is a major impact that there needs to be a shadow study for, of this project so you can look at it and find the impact on the neighbors that are across the street. So I encourage you to think about the reality of what really, how many cars are going to be there. Not what the zoning code says, the reality of, of what is really needed. Now, I'm about, hold on, I'm not going to take any questions on this. I'm the guy that's designing this Expo Center that you may have been reading about. Zoning code says I need to have 2,500 cars. Except I can also put an event in there that's like 9,000 people. Well, that's 4,500 cars in reality. You need to design and account for the reality of what is needed, not what the zoning code says. That's the minimums. There's going to be shadows impacting the neighborhood. There's going to be cars that they come out of that garage and they're going to turn to the east. Now, there's been drawings that talks, well, I can do a U-turn here and I can do a U-turn there. Well, let's tell you what happened. My opinion is when there are starting to have a whole bunch of wrecks because of that U-turn on either intersection. The first thing Tech Dot is going to do is put up a no-U-turn sign. Nobody's supposed to do a U-turn. Now, I'm a crazy guy. I drive like an idiot sometimes. But I assure you, doing a U-turn on 19th at either intersection, going either direction is crazy. So what's going to happen is everyone's going to come out of that garage. They can't do a U-turn. They're going to come down to 20th or 21st or 22nd, go west. They're going to come all the way through to probably Flint because they realize that, that Boston, that's nuts, you can't make a left turn there. Too many cars stacking up, you can't get through. So now they're going to go down to Flint and they're going to go all the way to Indiana Avenue. Now, everybody's going to go down 22nd Street to make the, the left-hand turn to go south on Indiana Avenue. The impact of cars is going to be mind-boggling in this neighborhood. I don't want them going by my house. I'm sure if you lived there, you wouldn't want them going by your house. The shade and the shadows are going to be enormous. It's going to start probably 4 o'clock in the afternoon, just as the sun gets around the southwest corner of that building. And it's going to go all the way to sunset. And it'd be 9 o'clock at night if they go back to daylight savings time. The impacts, it's mind-bogglingly too big. It's too tall. The hotel next door is three stories. Let's cut two floors off this. Now you're getting into a height that's more compatible with the texture of 19th Street. The footprint is enormous. The amount of water that's going to come off the roof of that thing is, is mind-boggling. If they bring it out to 19th Street, I did not wear rubber boots when I was going to Texas Tech. I didn't have to cross 19th. But how many of people that live as students have, one of their things is to have rubber boots to get across that street? I know they're working on it, but trust me, it's not going to work. The impacts are enormous. I ask you to deny this petition for the third or fourth or however many times it is. This is way, way, way too big, way, way too big impactful. It's not the right thing for Lubbock, period. Now, keep in mind, there's one new dorm in the pipeline at Texas Tech. I think it's over 400 or more beds. There's one being renovated. There's one that Athletics wants to build where the Auditorium and Coliseum was, although 49% of them will be athletes. And I've heard rumors that there could be a second dorm making three in the pipeline. So to say this is the savior of Texas Tech housing is not actually correct, not even in, in ones of vivid imagination like I have. So again, I ask you to decline, deny this petition or, uh, request. Thank you.
Is that the end of your?
Oh, I was the end.
You were, okay. Is there anybody else that'd like to come up and speak in opposition?
Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and address.
Yes, sure. Hi, I'm Cheryl Gonzalez, 3207 20th Street. We've been residents there for over 20 years. My husband and I raised two boys and got to love Tech Terrace, had basically a baseball team, football team, ready all the time with all the boys that live there. My only comment that I have is in regard to the new, I believe he's the new spokesperson, Mr. Snee mentioned that Texas Tech had made some sort of statement and that they were saying that they're in favor. I don't have the exact minutes, but I think that's what he said. So just to make sure, I clarified with a couple of people I know that are in administration. And two high-ranking administrators at Texas Tech have said they're unaware of any statement that has come from Texas Tech regarding this, that they have made absolutely no public statements whatsoever.
Not at this weight. You may go, I'm sorry.
Darceation, 2601 19th Street. Natalie Mainz played at the theater there in 1995. She was one of the first people to play there as the chicks and that's kind of like cultural significance as well as the fact that most of the buildings have been destroyed by the '70s tornado. So there's not a lot of the original buildings to give that old soul feeling. We know that the building does not have the, what is that? Cultural heritage stamp that says that nothing can be done to it, but still like, you know, we like the way it looks. We like the whole Cafe Jays. There's also another restaurant in there, the Guildhall Restaurant, as well as a lounge and a study area. And they're tearing it down to build a, what, a new lounge study area? Why a new lounge study area with new restaurants? There's already restaurants, there's already lounges, there's already study area there. There's no need to tear it down to build exactly what is already there in a cheaper way. The, the wall there, six feet thick, there's no sound that's going to get into the neighbor's yard. There's no buildings that's going to look into the neighbor's yard. In order for them to have that soundproofness, they're going to have to build a wall with a space in between- a space in between, plus no windows looking out into the alleyway, otherwise it's not going to work. There's no need to do, if they want to build that, that's fine, but why build it if it's already there? There's a parking garage area could be put over where the parking lot is right now. Plus that area between, okay, so you've got the Lutheran Center and then the Godbold Center. That area between the Lutheran Center and the Godbold's actually used as a driveway. So I lived there for 20 years. So many people will drive through there. Also, all the U-turns are made at Boston, or else you have to turn on 20th Street and go forward and go into the alleyway, or go on 20th Street. So there's a lot of U-turns there. And also, the whole, yes, there is a whole lot of traffic right now because there's construction. And the traffic reports were made for right now, like, you know. But if you think about it, when school's in full session, all of the slow traffic that's going around the construction right now will be the same slow traffic that is happening with all of the students. So I'm saying, don't tear down the building, put the parking garage over there on the area between the Lutheran Center and the Godbold. And then my other thing is saying, okay, so there's a lot of problem with a bunch of these big LCCs buying out huge swaths of land and having these houses for rent, which makes it unaffordable for the houses to be bought by the regular mom and pop. And it actually prices out people, so you're not able to have affordable people owning houses in the area. Instead, all these new houses they build on 20th Street, what's to say that they just don't keep buying out all the houses on 20th Street and make it a huge LCC that just, like, rents out and makes it unaffordable for everybody to live who is, you know, a single family who wants to live in the area? And so those are my points. Don't tear down the building to build something that's already there. There's already rooms for the housing, there's already room for bedrooms, there's already room for study rooms, there's already room for lounge, and there's already room for restaurants. Don't tear it down and build it back cheaper. Because we've seen a whole lot of those where they build up like McDougleville. It looks real pretty from the outside, but in 10 years after they sell it off to the new person, it's kind of crappy and it's not very well-built. So let's keep the integrity of the neighborhood. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you in permission?
Yes, sir.
I've been told not to do this. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Lauren Prather. My wife and I live at 3108 20th Street in a house that's been in my family for over 70 years. Grew up there, went to Roscoe, Monterey, and everywhere else. We took care of my parents when they're later in their life, and then about 30 years ago, we were able to move back in permanently. I do like to feel like I have a pretty good feel for what's going on in the hood and what's been going on in the hood. Nearly everything that's been said, we've already talked about, or y'all have already heard. A little background, I've been a certified economic developer for over 30 years, and prior to that, I spent six years working for the city of Lubbock. And I was the first business liaison officer, and I had to mediate between business producer or developers and city hall, and that was an interesting six years of my life. But I did learn a lot about what went on. Nearly everything that's been discussed today, I'm not going to worry you with or bother you with, because it's all been brought up. Only one thing that I want to emphasize is the fact of 20th Street. It is very, very important to me and the people on 20th and the people in the neighborhood that we do not allow multifamily living to cross that alley, because it's contagious. And I want to say right here, right now, 98% of all the students that live in Tech Terrace, they're good. And they're good citizens, and they do what they're supposed to do. That 2% kind of causes some trouble, but you're always going to have some people that are in single-family that are going to have more, all you got to do is drive around and look at the cars. When they got five or seven cars at their house, you know that there's more than two non-related. We did spend about two years, 10 years ago, when the council was going to move the two non-related to four, and we finally won, and we won on the fact that if you leave it at two, at least we can turn them in. But we know there's four, or five, or six living in every house, but like I said, the majority of them behave, they respect what they're doing, and they take care of it. My fear on this chart up here is we're going to allow approved multifamily to cross that alley, and it's going to be contagious. It's going to be contagious in the houses that are there that are already cheating. And anybody else, you're going to see more cases that are going to come out of that. Anyway, cannot tell you how much I appreciate what you do. I cannot tell you how much I appreciate what the staff does. Been there, done that, and I know it's tough, and we really appreciate where you are. And respectfully, professionally, I would request that you deny this request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prather. Is there anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Tiffany Pritchard. I live at 3205 32nd Street and have for over 30 years. I've been in the neighborhood for over 41 years. My late husband, Mike, actually grew up in the neighborhood. And what I want to say is, most of these people talking today do live in the north part of the neighborhood. Well, I live in the south part of the neighborhood. And what happens is, as the older people move, their kids come get on, they pass away, these homes are sold and become rent houses, and I am completely surrounded by college kids. And you have no idea what it's like. You know, without my husband being there, I'm a widow in my home. And these kids, a stop sign means nothing, absolutely nothing. And on 32nd Street, once you pass that drive-through, that cut-through at Indiana, by the time they pass my house, they're hitting 40. Because they don't have another stop sign until they get to Flint. And they drive that way all the way through the neighborhood. My Saturday morning routine is to get up and go out and pick up the beer cans and the trash out of my yard. They're very disrespectful. Yes, you do have good ones, but overall, they're away from mom and dad, they're not from here, they don't care, there's nobody to tattle on them, and so they're a free-for-all. And that's just what I want to say, because until you've lived it and experienced it, you really don't know what it's like.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Yes, sir.
Hello, everybody. My name is Brandon Simpson from 2624 20th, neighboring this property. I've spoke before, but like, since I've kind of had the opportunity to think about it and everything, I just think that if you approve this, there would be nothing from stopping it continuing on. To my knowledge, North Overton used to be an old neighborhood, and then now that's all developed into apartment houses and things like that. So essentially, I know there's the 20-40 in plan, but I just don't want Tech Terrace to turn into North Overton and just be full of apartments. Thank you, and that'll be it.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Sid Sideman, 3202 20th Street. I agree with virtually everything anybody said here tonight in opposition to this particular plan, but I really want to bring to your attention something that has concerned me for some time now, because I have a son in the industry that maybe Mr. Wheatley and Mr. Noble are in. And when they, y'all are a side part to it, but when they build apartment complexes, or, which are not student housing, but apartment complexes, the goal is that from construction to sale is between three and five years. Because as soon as they get them about 92% rented, they're sold, because that's primed, the property's still new, everything in it's still new, you're not having kind of repairs problems, they got it rented, so it's viable to a potential investor. My concern is, on the second, third, and fourth sale of these properties, we end up with something similar to what we're standing in here today. A building that has to be urban-removed, if you want to call it that. In this case, city took care of it for us. They spent $60 million to let us all gather here tonight and share our thoughts with one another. But with the implementation, and I don't know if it's just in Texas, of what they call a public, and you have to set it up, Lubbock hasn't set it up yet, I don't think, a public facility corporation, where when your apartment complex no longer generates the kind of money you need it to generate, you can, if it's set up in that city, you can actually get with the city and have it approved to be a low-income housing facility that then is off the tax rolls, which works both for and against the tax rolls of that particular country, that particular area. But it's legal in the state of Texas, so if the city of Lubbock ever put this in, we're in a world of hurt. We're in a world of hurt anyway, just if the building does decline. This building, they keep saying you could have a Home Depot there, you could have a bar there. You could, if it were easy to get to, if it were easy to get out of. It is absolutely not. As it stands today, that is why what's there is there, and you sing a little stagnant on any kind of development being made. It's difficult to get to. As students realize it's just a pain in the neck to go in and out of that building, there'll be fewer and fewer of them that actually want to live there, just like there's fewer and fewer corporations that would like to build there at this very moment. This is a concern. I hope that to give this to you tonight, I hope you take that into consideration, because this is way too big a building to do anything with, once it's no longer generating the kind of money investors want it to generate. And that is something that does, I will have to say, scares me to death. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you for your time. My name's Stanley Blanton. I've lived in Tech Terrace since 1979, specifically at 2909 20th Street since 1985, raised two children that went to Roscoe Wilson. I know the neighborhood well, know quite a few of the people that have spoken tonight. Just a few points I'd like to clarify or amplify. The Up Campus proposal, as previously stated, pointed out, did not include any traffic study that included 20th Street, per se, of particular interest to me, since I live on that street. One of the closest grocery stores to this proposal is, well, 26 in Boston, but the next biggest grocery store is the Market Street at Quaker and 19th. So I said, "Well, if I was at Cafe J and wanted to go there, what do we do? We pull up Google Maps. What does it tell me to do? Go down 20th Street. Take a right, take another right, take another right, go down 20th Street." Okay, so much for the U-turn idea, which we all know is a bad idea. Second point, utilities, water, sewer, electrical. The proposal says, mentions upgrading sewer and electrical as needed, and I'm not sure how it works in a project. My question, I know the city footed the bill for a lot of the infrastructure for the Walmart over at Fourth and Q. Is that going to be the case for this development? Is the city going to foot the bill for the utilities, or is the developer going to foot the bill to upgrade old clay lines in the alley to modern lines with sufficient unit capacity to provide the unit supply for the water supply for these planned developments? Same question goes to the proposed underground electrical. Who's going to foot the bill?
I believe the developer, they had expressed that earlier, that they were going to do that as part of their project. I'll let them answer for that.
Well, my question, every, the proposal's very vague on that. Will be upgraded in consultation with LPNL. It never mentions who will pay for it. I understand that you have to have a specific number of bathrooms, toilets, et cetera, you know, to get all those things, but my, you know, if not them, then is the city not only willing to ignore setback requirements, but are they willing to pay a major cost for a development like this? Trash collection, there was a question, one of the council members had, and I didn't quite understand the answer. Their proposal has two access points for trash collections for their facility through the alley. As was previously pointed out, that alley's only 20 feet wide. That's their proposal to widen it up to 20 feet, and it necks down to either 17 or 18 feet on east and west. So just the access is there. But my question, are those trash collection points in the parking structure, are those like a dedicated room? And they ask, somebody asked, "Well, could cars go through there?" And the answer was, "No, they're designated for trash collection." There's a difference in a blocked-off room for trash collection versus a sign that say, "Don't drive through here." We know from our own personal experience at different places, a sign isn't going to mean anything to residents that want to go out. And you're going to have two-way traffic in that alley, trying to go different directions, cut to Boston, cut to university. And if you're allowing traffic out of that garage, even though the sign says no, then you've got a problem. In addition to those, whatever, five-bedroom houses fronting 20th Street. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wanting to speak in opposition? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm Roger Settler, 2120 Broadway. I'm president of the Congress of Neighborhood Associations, which represent 11 neighborhood associations in the city of Lubbock. I am proud to report that we took a unanimous vote in support of Tech Terrace Neighborhood Association and their opposition to this project. And I would like to speak with perhaps some new material at this time. Two aspects that need to be considered. First of all, Benji Sneed and others representing Up Campus Project have said, "The highest and best use for this property is this proposal." I would respectfully submit to you that the highest and best use for this property is to let it remain the way it is. The Plain St. Mary's Hospital building is historic, and Lubbock has had a sickness about tearing down historic buildings. Too many have gone down. Municipal Auditorium Coliseum, the Health Department, one after another, we have lost our history, and this history should not be lost. Before the building sold to Mr. Hardberger, I spoke to Carlton Godbold about the possibility of a museum in the Godbold portion of the property. And this would be the highest and best use for that building. The Lutheran Center has been there since the 1960s. It's served thousands of students, and I doubt sincerely the Lutherans would have money to replace the structure and serve the students as they have. So I would submit to you, the highest and best use is to maintain the history of the property, maintain the buildings as they are, the park-like appearance that all of the trees and the greenery provide. You know, we want green space in the city of Lubbock. We have it right now, if we don't destroy it for a high-density project. And I would submit to you, the second thing I wanted to talk about is the wars we experienced in Overton South over the years. Ted Hogan, Sam Spikes, some of my colleagues here tonight can tell you about how long we have fought to preserve the integrity of the Overton South. Now we try to call it the Historic Overton Neighborhood. And here's what happened beginning in the 1960s. Developers would come in, and with little opposition, other than Ted Hogan, Senior, me, and a few others, they would come in, buy a single-family lot, and insert an apartment building with five or 10 units on that single-family lot. Oh, they would promise the parking won't be that bad. Guess what, ladies and gentlemen? In every case, a five-unit apartment building would generate seven or eight cars. A 10-unit apartment building would generate 13 or 14 cars, wrecking havoc on the surrounding properties. And this happened time and again. And I submit to you that this insertion of high density in an area that was meant for single-family caused a deterioration in Overton South that we're still fighting to this day. Our neighborhood is under siege. Rumors have it that the McDougals want to tear it down and make it into another Overton North. And fortunately, we have a historic preservation status that prevents that from happening. But if this high-density project, which we all know in our hearts, we know what is right down deep, and we know that putting a huge, high-density project at that location is wrong. It is simply wrong. It won't work. It's trying to force something that isn't natural into a situation. I would urge you to deny this request. You know, this is, how many times do we come back to the to deny this request. You know, this is, how many times do we come back to the well? It reminds me of the roadblocks. If you don't get your way the first time, keep coming back. You know, deny this project. Let's make an end to it. The reason Mr. Richards spoke about the one-year cooling-off period is the tradition and the law has been that projects can't come back and waste your time and ours every few months submitting projects that they claim are a little bit different. And this is, we know it isn't that much different. There's not that much difference in 600 beds and 750 beds, and we all know that more than 1,000 cars and trucks will be generated by this proposal. So we know deep, deep down that this is the wrong thing at the wrong time, and I would urge you to defeat it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition at this time? Okay, not seeing any. We will move. Is there anyone here to speak in favor? Or would like to address, I think there was something you wanted to address earlier.
Mr. Chairman, I'll stand on tonight's record as to the accuracy of my comments earlier.
Okay.
That was a lot. Just want to address a few of the comments that came out tonight. Just to clarify, this will certainly be a heavily monitored property. It's going to have onsite property management, unlike a lot of the rental properties in the neighborhood. Lots of cameras. They probably average around 100 cameras inside and out. So it'll be heavily monitored. As for the size of the footprint that's been brought up several times, a lot of the complexes that are comparable to this that have been built around Tech Campus that are, you know, mostly pedestrian in the Overton area are quite a bit larger than what we're proposing. Those are approximately 550 feet by 340 feet. So a significantly larger footprint with interior parking, they have ways to get, take care of the exhaust, and that'll be handled with the design. The pool, the concern about the pool, that's part of the regulation for open spaces. So that's something that we're required to have. Questions have been brought up about the PD and varying from things of that, from the base zone. The base zone for the PD for CA does not have a lot coverage requirement. There is no lot coverage maximum, and so we're not deviating from that. For the A1 base zone, the lot coverage is 50%, and we're decreasing the lot coverage with what we're proposing to do. As for comments about, let me see if I can get back to...
Could you explain real quick how you're decreasing the lot coverage?
Well, as you can see, okay, this graphic right here, so this is the A1, those homes. And Jordan, you're a home builder. You're familiar with home building in Lubbock. This is the, this is essentially an average of a 52-foot-wide lot for all of these lots. You've got greater-than-five-foot side setbacks. You've got greater-than-20-foot front setbacks. And so you're less than the coverage maximum for a residential zoning. I mean, it's much less. Now, if you look at, if you look, let me see, bear with me just a moment. If you look at this map, and if you look at those three lots, as mentioned, you can only build three homes on those three lots. If you look to the lots to the east of that, and to the west of this, west of Boston, those lots are much narrower. And so there's many more homes built on that same width, and many of those homes have multiple buildings with multiple tenants in them. And so we're not really changing the intent of the neighborhood with what we're proposing. And I would urge you to just take a look at this graphic. To me, this graphic says so much. As far as the Texas Tech unit, this is the only thing that really doesn't fit with the Texas Tech unit. I mean, it's a blight on the neighborhood. It's C2 zoning. It's a parking lot across from residences, and we're proposing to build very nice, single-family-looking homes. I believe that the architect is planning a Spanish Renaissance-type architecture for these to match what is built around Texas Tech. One gentleman referred to going to get groceries and referred to this being in the center of the development. This is not in the center of the development. This is on the outside. This fronts a major highway. I don't understand why they have disparaged the traffic study done by Kim Lee Horn. That's, they're very good engineers. They're pros at traffic studies. Some of the data that they use is open-source data. I can get on my phone and click on nearly every intersection, every signalized intersection in Lubbock, and pull up the most recent traffic count. I don't have to do an open records request. So I can go to that intersection and see data from 2019, and the car counts that go across it. So that stuff is available. Kim Lee Horn knows what they're doing. They've projected the traffic out to 2025, not from today, not from yesterday or last year. It's projected out beyond. There's factors of safety that are used, and I'm not sure why they're disputing something that was done by a professional engineer and approved by the state of Texas. But, let's see. As far as the openness of some of the things that were said, and some of the items, and the utilities, ultimately, we haven't gone to final design. We haven't gone to final construction documents. And so when you get into that, there may be a need to upsize the water more than what we currently think, or upsize a sewer. We'll certainly coordinate with utilities in a way that services this property. We won't get a building permit without their approval. And we won't get a building permit without us footing the bill for that study and for those improvements. And so those will certainly be done. And during that process, there may be a need to cut units based on sizing of a wall. This happens with great regularity in the construction plan process of apartments. It changes by a unit or two here or there. You go through, you go through the accessibility compliance, and they say, "You need to shift this door." Well, then all of a sudden, a two-unit area becomes a one-unit area or whatever. So there is some flexibility in that at this stage, and so that's the reason for the language. But with that, I'd be happy to answer any more questions you might have.
Anyone else here would like to speak in favor? Yes, sir?
Mr. Chairman, commission, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name's George Hardburger. I live at 1602 Texas Avenue. I moved to Lubbock in 1999, and pretty soon after I got here, I became aware of this property. I didn't even know it was called the Godbold at the time. But I recognize it was a great piece of real estate. This, I bought it about a year ago, about a year and two, three months ago. You know, that thing was for sale for, I don't know, 10 or 15 years. Anyone in this room could have bought it. But I finally did. And over all those years, that, it's been underutilized. It's barely occupied. The only occupant in there is Cafe J. Chrome was in there for a while, but the majority of the property's been empty for years and years. It's deteriorated. It's going to continue to deteriorate. 10 years from now, it's really going to be bad if we don't do something. If we're voted down, then, you know, I guess the only options we've got are to exercise our rights under the current zoning that's there. And, you know, there are a lot of things we could do that we don't want to do, and we really don't want to do. We want to do this project. But a lot of those things would be objectionable to the neighborhood. They've made a lot of, the opposition has made a lot of hay about traffic. And I just got to say again, I'll keep this brief, I really will. The traffic now is bad. I mean, that's a big old parking lot, and there are several hundred cars a day that go in and out of there. Either students that are driving from off-campus somewhere, they park there, they walk to school. There's Cafe J traffic. There's cross-traffic. But we've met with the Neighborhood Association more than once. I've met with Don Richards. I've talked to Cindy Prattis on the phone. The developer, Mr. Bus, has talked individually to some of them. And what we found is, you know, yeah, we've changed, we've made some changes, but we made those changes in response to their complaints. And we believe that we have answered their complaints. The 20th Street side in particular, the traffic, there will be a fraction of what it is now. Yeah, that's the deal. You like to laugh when you don't agree.
Let's be courteous.
I think we've made reasonable attempts to deal with their issues, and we haven't been met with reasonable responses. On top of that, I don't believe that these people here today represent the majority of the neighborhood. The neighborhood is a square mile. 5,000 people live there. 65% of the homes are rentals, and the majority of those are students. So you got to say, at least half the neighborhood, or more, is students. Were there any students here tonight speaking? These people are not our target market. Students are. I believe that this is a great project. All I really want to do is sell it to this great developer, who I think is the best developer in the country. I believe that this project will be great for Lubbock. I believe it'll be great for Texas Tech, and I believe it'll be great for this neighborhood, in spite of what they say. I urge you to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hardburger. Is there anyone else to speak? Yes, sir? Nope. All right. Speak in favor.
Hello. My name's Bo Baker. I live at 5727 76th Street. I'm also a Lubbock native, and I'm a student at Texas Tech. Tonight, in regards to having a college student as a neighbor, I consider myself well-behaved, but I have a girlfriend who lives on 23rd nearest university. Every single one of her neighbors who are college students, they throw beer cans, and they trash the neighborhood, and they play loud music all night, and they party all night. You cannot, in good faith, say that it's better to have a neighbor next to you in a home than in this big development, because 600 students will be moving to Tech Terrace regardless of whether or not this project gets built. These students, projects do not increase your population. These students will be coming here whether or not it gets built. Earlier, I heard someone say that you don't want these people moving into your neighborhood. I heard someone say that. They're already here. They're already here in this neighborhood. And I heard someone, earlier, a kind lady spoke about beer cans in her yard. Well, if this gets built, and let's say the population of students does not increase at all, and you have more students moving into this apartment, are they going to throw the beer cans from the roof down to your lawn? It's a lot better to have these neighbors, it's a lot better to have students in these big apartments instead of next to you in a home. And in regards to earlier, they were talking about the forecasting for the growth of students at Texas Tech. And they mentioned that it's decreased recently. But I'm pretty sure the forecast was before 2020, I believe, and all that. And so with the recession and the, or not, sorry, we're not in a recession technically. But with the economic impacts of that, yes, nationally, student enrollment has gone down, but that doesn't necessarily mean that that student enrollment cannot pick back up. Anyways. Excuse me. In terms of the traffic study, they mentioned the U-turns, and that majority of students going through that are going to take a left turn instead of getting a U-turn at Boston and 19th. I would argue that there, that it will be very common to do a U-turn at that place. I think 19th, right there, is nearly like four lanes or more. It's one of the widest lanes we have, and it's the lightest, widest urban arterial we have in Lubbock, I believe. Doing a U-turn there is significantly easier, and is not as comparable to other streets where there's three lanes or even two lanes. In addition to that, he mentioned in his analysis of the traffic study, he went out and was calculating the vehicles per minute or whatever, and it was the difference between 24 and 22. And the margin of error on that is so high, I think you can just completely invalidate that opposition to the traffic study. In addition to that, I'll say, in terms of surveying, I was not offered $1,000. I don't know if other people were, but I hope I can get my $1,000 for coming here. Sorry, I had a whole spiel planned, but... Oh, vacancies. A lot was made about vacancies. In regards to vacancies, one, vacancies are a good thing for renters. They allow them to have bargaining power. And secondly, a lot of times when vacancy studies are done, they're very inaccurate, because sometimes someone could be living in a home or a property, but they're not counted as vacant. Yeah, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Baker. Okay, is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this zone case? Okay, not seeing any. We're going to close the public hearing.
It's a matter of discussion. I make the motion to approve Zone Case 3471-C.
So with that, and the thing, this is uncharted territory now, because now you have all the legality aspect of it. Mr. Richards talking about a dismissal. We're not going to entertain the other that Mr. Murphy brought up. What's, I have to remind everybody, this is an advisory council. This is not the court of law. We're not here to make judgment, dismissals, or anything.
Are we in discussion?
Yes, we are.
Has somebody seconded? Can we have a second?
Sure. So, before you, I don't want, you know, let's don't get off in the weeds about the legality of it. I understand that that's something the city council's going to have to hear, and some others, and city staff. But breaking this down into silos and then trying to organize it in a way that's in everybody's mind that we can talk about this.
If I could...
Yes, ma'am, Susan.
Let's be clear about what the brief for the Planning and Zoning Commission is.
Yeah, exactly.
We determine whether a proposed zone change is harmonious with the site. It's a simple brief. Sometimes it's complicated trying to administer that, but it's a simple brief. That means we don't care whether there's tax revenue that's coming into the city as a result of something. Additional tax revenue for the city is a byproduct of a zone change. It's not the cause of a zone change. We don't care about whether TTU needs extra housing for its students. If this gets built, it's a byproduct that we help TTU. What we care about, or what we make a decision on, is whether it is harmonious for the site. So what we have to consider is the site, and, you know, a lot of the factors that were brought up here tonight, whether that has an impact on the neighborhood. So in terms of priority, in my opinion, the neighborhood has priority in terms of what we consider, and whether this is beneficial to the neighborhood or detrimental to the neighborhood.
So I just have a few comments. I'll be brief, because we're approaching 10 o'clock. But I just want to think of it as right, right now, where we're at, right now, on this property. Not how we got here, where we're headed, right now. This track's been studied by almost every developer in Lubbock and out of town. It has, over and over and over. It has. Right now, on 20th Street, it's C2. C2, right now, without any hearing, could be a McDonald's, a Starbucks, Chick-fil-A drive-through, right, right now. Right now. That's not good. I think the townhomes, as shown here, are a gift to that C2, as it currently is. Nobody in this room would want a McDonald's right there. Nobody. 19th Street is C4, and that's, it's in line with the Future Land Use Plan. Right now, that could be a... Right now, that could be automotive, Home Depot, office warehouse, tattoo shop. Nobody in this room would want a Home Depot. I promise you, the vote right now would be no Home Depot. I promise. I know how that would go. I think a student housing as proposed there is a good thing for C4. I just don't think any neighborhood association has any kind of jurisdiction on a state highway close to a hard corner. I just don't. It's C4, it's in, it's already shown as C4 in the future land use map. I think, as I go back to, every developer's looked at this. I think this is the best opportunity. I voted for it last time, I'll vote for it again to happen. I'm ready to see something happen there. 20th Street doesn't wanna see a parking lot anymore. 19th Street doesn't wanna see a one-use tenant building. I'm ready to see something here. Someone's ready and willing to do it. And so that, that's where I'm at on this.
I agree with Jordan in the sense that which is closer to the future land use map on 20th Street? Let's take that as an example. It is residential in the future land use. Is A1 closer to residential or is it C2? Right? That's just another way to look at it or slice, slice the hog. And like you said, C4 versus C8, they're both commercial. Which one fits the need better? That's our commission, right?
My comment is, and I'm gonna go like this, I was one that the first time it came through, I voted no. And I was going in, and I think I lost sight of what we were trying to look at because as Susan's saying, we're looking at land use. I grew up in the Tech Terrace neighborhood. I know how, how it is and what it goes. And, and I see and I understand a lot of it, but it's been sitting empty forever. Are we just gonna say, no, we're never gonna get it? We're gonna be, I've gone to my point now, I'm, I'm for it.
Am I, can I ask one of the, okay, Cindy Pradas?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I don't wanna put you on the spot, but I'm gonna have to.
Go right ahead.
I forget who said this, but said that the, the unit Neighborhood Association has said they're not gonna want any student housing there. Is that true?
What they've said is it's high-density student housing. They're opposed to high-density.
So that you're gonna oppose anything that up-campus proposes?
You know, I, I guess what you have to, have to look at is where, what is the definition of high-density? What, what are we talking about at that point? We've not, we've not put numbers to, we've not said we don't want, first of all, we said we, we'd like to have something done there. It's, it's been very, it's, it's been said, it's very clear that we would like to see development that improves the neighborhood, improves the city.
But what would that be?
You know, when we mention these things, we get shot down, so I hesitate to even mention just the, the pie in the sky, the pie in the sky, high-end hotel that has the spa and the restaurant and the speakeasy and the pool and the fountains and something that looks just beautiful and blends in and they've got the ability to, to do this. I'm, I'm not a developer, I'm not a builder, but you know, when we're just sitting around talking about what would I love to see, oh gosh, you know, if there's, there's this really fine fancy hotel and a, and a restaurant, we're, we're talking high-end, higher-end than anything that we've had in Lubbock before, could be something that when my daughter comes to visit, I say, hey, we're gonna go hang out at the spa. Or, you know, I wanna make reservations there for Valentine's Day, it's something special. With that proximity to Texas Tech, I can, I can, I can just imagine that you, you've got, you can have a low number of people in a facility like that and not have heavy, heavy traffic, heavy use. Not that that's an issue that, that we agree on about the traffic, but I just see it as kind of a star, something that would be nice to, nice to see. Y'all, I, I picture that all of y'all have been to or seen some of the, the bigger cities that have that, that special place where you say, that's where I wanna book for my honeymoon, or that's where I wanna book for my vacation. I'm gonna go see my kids, but I'm staying at the place with the spa, so it's just dreaming, you know, it's dreaming.
Failing that, what else would you settle for?
I said what, what I could dream of. I can't speak to what the Neighborhood Association would settle for. And, and I know it's been said that there are many other people. We've, we have, we have tolerated a, a lot of ugly talk about us over these last few months from, we don't have anything better to do, we don't want anything. We've been criticized up and down and we've really tried to take the high road on this. And so we hesitate to, to mention anything because we will, it will be said, Tech Terrace Unit says things that they don't stand behind. So, so what I just said was just me dreaming, me thinking about places I've been in the past and thinking, wouldn't it be really cool if we had something like that in a city of this size that would benefit the entire city? You know, if, if my kids were going to school here and I came to visit them, I'm like, you, you book it, you know, we're, we're staying, we're gonna be booked way, way out. Football games, basketball games, whatever, conventions, you know? So that's me speaking for me, not for the Neighborhood Association. Because the Neighborhood Association gave me the, the privilege of appointing an ad hoc committee to speak based on what they told us. And what they told us was, they do not wanna see high-density housing. Nobody said we don't want students. We, we've got students. And like somebody said, 98% of the students are fabulous. I've got students on my block. They are, they have learned how to park on the street now. They, they are not parking going the wrong way. I mean, it's just, every year, we have a new education with our students and we're gonna try to get better about that communication with our students, so we do live in better harmony with our students. Because we like our students. We like our students, we like our professors, we like our doctors, we like our retirees, we like our young families. We just don't think adding 600 students is a good fit. And that's what the Neighborhood Association said we could speak to, is that that's not a fit for our neighborhood.
So if they went down to 300 students?
I can't, I can't speak to that because we didn't talk numbers. It's, it's, I'm not, I can't define what a high-density is. So I can't say, well, let's take what we did on 20th Street and do it on 19th Street and we'll be okay with it. So we've got 35 on 19th and 35 on 20th, that's 70, 70 students? Yeah, that might be able to be sold, but I, I can't speak on behalf of the Neighborhood Association for specific numbers.
I'd like, I'd like to just add a point to that. A bit of candidness in an email chain that I'm reading says the majority of feedback that I have heard is not in support of student housing of any kind. So it's my, it's my opinion that this could be a one-floor building with 50 kids in it and there's still the opposition.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was trying to find out. Okay. The neighborhood, you know, I, I said this last time, the neighborhoods around Tech, around Texas Tech are historic neighborhoods and they're fragile. And what all of these little neighborhoods fear, and they're all communities, and I don't, you know, James has lived in Tech Terrace, I live there now, they're all, they're all like little villages and they love their little villages and they're quirky and they're odd and they don't look like every other housing development in America. And what they all fear is becoming the next North Oberton. And so it's, it, so I think part of this, this apocalyptic gut reaction that people are having to this is that it's an apartment complex, like North Oberton. And is this the, the thin end of the wedge that's going to march on the neighborhood? I have to admit, I, I felt a little better seeing the view of the townhouses on 20th Street. I'm not sure it goes far enough in terms of not looking like all the rest of the apartment complexes that would go up anywhere in, you know, general town, North America. It doesn't look like a neighborhood, which is a quirky little historic neighborhood. That's why I was asking the questions about, you know, what are you saving from the God Bolt? How are you paying some sort of homage to that historic structure if you're gonna tear it down? And by the way, this is now a pri, this is a private property. If the, if the property owner wanted to, he could go in there with a bulldozer tomorrow and tear down the God Bolt. The Planning and Zoning Commission doesn't have the power to stop them from doing that. Let's be clear about that. We also are not developers. It's not our job to go out and find the development for a particular property. We rule on cases that come before us and that is, that's the extent of what we do. Am I correct? That's the extent of what we do and what we are allowed to do. That said, it's also not our responsibility, but if somebody comes and buys a property and then says, well, I'm sure I can get the zoning change for this and do X, you know, that doesn't sway us either. That's not part of our brief. Our brief is simple. Does it fit the neighborhood? I, I personally think that the God Bolt is in sad shape, its parking lot is a blight. You know, all of the stuff about setbacks and so on, I think, I think ship is right. I think that the, you know, the city should pay attention to that. However, the truth of the matter is, we wouldn't give a fig about setbacks if we didn't want an apartment complex in our neighborhood. Am I right? I'm right. I don't even need a huzzah to know that. I mean, otherwise, nobody else would be running around in the neighborhood with a tape measure trying to see who's setback far enough. And I can tell you right now, there'd be a lot of carports that would have to be torn So, my feeling is, God, something needs to be done with this poor property. And this, this apartment complex is an improvement. Nevertheless, I find that, much to my regret, because I am sick to death of this, I can't vote for it. It doesn't, I, I understand the, the deeply entrenched historical aversion, the fear of becoming the next North Oberton. And it doesn't go far enough. And that's why I was asking about R2, because at least that's a buffer between A1 and R1. At least that's a buffer. And at least you're saying this far and no farther. And if, and the reason I was asking Cindy about, you know, would you go down to 300? Well, that's not as many as 600 and maybe that's a compromise. And maybe the, you know, the developer could, could pay some more than a not, passing nod of red doors to what went before in that spot. So regrettably, and only regrettably because I'm really tired of this case, I'm, I'm gonna have to vote no because I understand the depth of what the neighborhood wants and their aver, and what there, there is an aversion to and why it's there. And so that's why I have to vote no.
I just wanna echo what Jordan said too, that we're here for what is proposed now. It's been vacant for a long time, or mostly vacant. And that person that could build that ideal hotel that you're talking about has not showed up and I don't think they will. I think to, to your point about we gotta do what's best for the neighborhood, I think that weighs in heavily. And I think that when I first got on this commission, I spoke with Ms. Latrell Joy back there and she charged me with, you, you need to do what's best for the city. And in my opinion, this is a great project for the city of Lubbock.
Let's be courteous.
And, yeah, I, I mean...
And may I say one more thing? Because I sit next to this guy at these meetings, I sit next to all of these commissioners and they are good people. And when they say they're trying to make the best decision based on what is brought before them, they really are. We disagree sometimes. And so if he says, I think this is best, then I know that's what he really believes. None of us up here are doing this because we're lining our pockets with developer money.
Okay. And sometimes we just have to agree to disagree.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Mr. Chair, we need to take it to a vote if you would do it by show of hands. And also, just as a reminder, we're in a little bit of a different situation here because we have an even number of commissioners at tonight's meeting. If it's a four-to-four vote, it does not pass. So, just so everyone's aware of that.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just add, I keep coming back to what's the alternative? So kinda, kinda on the same boat. First of all, U-turns are not a bad thing, like they get a bad rap. What's the alternative? Making a left-hand turn? If there's no median there, they're gonna make a left-hand turn across four lanes of traffic? That's a terrible idea. If this, if, if something, if nothing goes here, what's the alternative? It's an empty parking lot, it's dilapidated, it's, it's an eyesore, right in the middle of what is a great neighborhood? So what's an alternative? I, I haven't heard any alternatives that are feasible besides versions of what we're looking at. So for me, it's just, what else, what's the alternative?
Mr. Chairman, I'm moved that you called the question.
I'm still thinking. You sure can.
So I'm the first, to be honest, that I am new. Tonight is my first night to deal with any of this conversation.
And she has promised not to quit after two.
So my question is, the Boston University alley expansion, why can that not be at both sides instead of just behind this property? Is there...
Of east and west side of Boston?
Because I do see that that will be, everybody's trying to get out behind Boston is going to be a traffic.
Well, their property, correct me if I'm wrong, but their property doesn't extend all the way to Boston. So they're gonna be held responsible for their north-south side of the extent of their property. Which to, I think it was Mr. Fox's point, where it's gonna bottleneck down on the east and west side of that. It doesn't, it doesn't extend all the way out. Unless I'm misspeaking. Anybody else?
I just, I, I wanna, you know, I'm, I'm just sitting here thinking about my little village. I think, I think the village has, has something to say about what happens in the village.
Well, you gotta remember, alls we're doing is making a recommendation that's going to the City Council and it's their final decision.
All right. Call the question? We have a motion? Do we have a second? All in favor? Show of hands.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Two. Did you get that, Karen? Okay. That will go to City Council. What are the dates for the first reading?
The first reading will be Tuesday, February 28th at 2:00 in the afternoon.
Tuesday, February 28th, 2:00 in the afternoon, is the first reading with City Council.
Hey, I got a question before we adjourn. Do we ever come up with a date for the joint P&amp;Z City Council meeting? All right. Move to adjourn.
Waiting for, do we need to adjourn?
Yeah.
Adjourned.